Okay, thank you very much, David. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Terry. We appreciate you coming here today. We'd like to welcome you to this regular monthly hearing of the Cobb Planning Commission. Planning Commission is an advisory board for the Board of Commissioners. We're appointed by the Board of Commissioners to review every request that comes to the county for a rezoning or for a land use permit. So we'll do that today. We'll make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, but then the final and binding decision on every case will rest with them, and they'll make those decisions at their regular hearings. And their next hearing will be September the 19th. So if you're here for any of the cases today, you'll need to come back on the 19th for the Board of Commissioners' hearing. It's our custom to invite various members of the clergy, the local clergy, to come and say a few words or lead us in a prayer as they decide. It's my pleasure today to introduce you to Minister Jeff Geesman. Jeff, come on up, if you will, make your way to the podium. When Jeff finishes his comments and his prayer for us, I'll invite our officer, Ott, Skip Ott, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. When you see Skip come forward, if you'll stand as you're able, we'll have the pledge. Pastor, welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Bow with me, please. Gracious and wonderful Father, Creator of all things, we praise you and thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you, Father, for the beautiful place that you have created for us to live. And, Father, as these commissioners meet today, I pray that you grant them wisdom, and then all that speak today speak from their heart, but speak with consideration and love for one another. Help us, as we live in this county, to be people of love and of peace. Help us to be considerate. Help us to be and have a city and a place where all are welcome and where all can get along. Father, bless those who are in the path of the storm that is headed our way. I pray, Father, protection in your grace and mercy for all of them. Bless those who are traveling to find safer places to be during the storm. And may all of those who are guiding them and leading them do so in a good manner so that all arrive safely. Father, I pray that you bless us to be your people and to love and care for one another. Father, again, bless these proceedings today, and through Jesus, your Son, I ask this prayer. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor and Officer Ott. I failed to mention Jeff is from the Church of Christ out on Burn Hickory Road. I'm sure if you're looking for a good church, he would be delighted to have you come and visit his church. First on our agenda this morning will be our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and our zoning staff have fully investigated and were satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and for which there is no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, this is John raising his hand over to my left, to your right, will read those cases into the record, and he'll ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to or is in opposition to any of those cases. If there is, then we may elect to pull that from the consent agenda, in which case we would hear it in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear our held or continued cases, which were held or continued from a previous meeting. And lastly, we will get into our regular agenda, regular cases. Again, they're in a numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to identify themselves, to come forward and be sworn in before they give any testimony. Then the opposition will be asked likewise, or if you wish to make a comment on, you'll be asked likewise to come forward and do the same and also be sworn in. When the case number is called by Mr. Peterson, if you wish to address the board, come forward and present yourself to our officer of the day, which is Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand. Jason's on the front row. Jason will swear you in. He'll also ask you to sign his register, which gives us the correct spelling of your name, which we'd like to have for our record. So if you do speak, be sure you do that. Be aware that each side that comes forward to address the board will have 10 minutes collectively. This is the most important thing I'll say to you today. It's not 10 minutes per person, it's 10 minutes as a group, collectively. So just be mindful of that, be mindful of the length of your comments, because we do want to hear what you have to say. At that point, there is no rebuttal process. In other words, if you come up to speak, you're not coming up to ask us questions or to ask the applicant questions. You're coming up just to tell us what it is you'd like us to know and to make your case. We may, however, invite you back up to answer a specific question or to clarify a point that you have made. So that's our rules. Mr. Peterson, do you have anything else for us this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on it. The ringing does interfere with broadcasting presentations, so if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. Mr. Chairman, Board, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-12, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-12 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-27, Ameritech LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-27 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-34, Josh Thompson. That case has been continued by staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-34 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-44, Meritage Homes of Georgia LLC. That case has been continued by the Planning Commission until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-44 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-49, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-49 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-53, Brooks Chidwood Capital LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-53 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-56, O'Call Companies LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. Z-56 will not be heard today. S-L-U-P-8, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so S-L-U-P-8 will not be heard today. Lastly, S-L-U-P-9, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so S-L-U-P-9 will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman and Board, there is one case on today's regular agenda in which the applicant is asking it to be continued until your next hearing. That's rezoning case Z-52, Century Communities of Georgia LLC. The applicant has asked this be continued until your October date, Mr. Chairman and Board, so they can continue working with the community on the proposal.
Okay, thank you, John. Z-52, is that yours? Okay, you want to tell us anything about that?
Yeah, this is a, it's a good development. The leadership of the community, this is over in Brookstown, the leadership of the community over there met with the attorney, Kevin Moore, yesterday. I believe they had a very positive constructive meeting. There are a number of issues that they wish to work together on over the next month in an orderly way. They probably could have done it by today, but I think the next month is going to be the appropriate way to do it. And I expect that when this comes back next month, or whenever it comes back, it's going to have strong consensus in the community, so I'm excited about the development. Thank you.
Okay, so you're recommending...
So I recommend that it be continued until next month, yes.
Okay. We have a second from Gault. We need to go ahead and vote on that. So Z-52 will be added to the consent agenda. Let's go ahead.
To the continued agenda.
I'm sorry, the continued. We're hoping, you never know. John says never do that, so I won't predict that. But what this literally means, folks, is the cases that John read into the record here and that Skip added one case to, they will not be heard today. So if you're here for any of these cases, Z-52, Z-12, 27, 34, 44, Z-49, 53, 56, also SLUP, a special land use permit, 8 and 9, those will not be heard today. So if you're here for those, we'll take those up, most of those, next month, which literally means October's going to be a fun month because we have our regular cases, plus these that we're tabling until that time. So that's, okay, Skip, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a possibility there may be people in the audience who are here opposed to Z-52. If you were here, you should have hopefully gotten the word not to come, but if you did come, you don't need to stay for the rest of the day. Just want to say that.
Okay. John, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years immediately proceeding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners, additional information about this is contained on the table in the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to the Board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the Board at its own discretion. With that, Mr. Chairman, ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for September 7th, 2017. Rezoning case Z-47, Hernan G. Guerrero requests a rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 91 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Harris Road, south of Smyrna Powder Springs Road. Staff recommends approval to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on June 30th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; stormwater management division comments and recommendations; department of transportation comments and recommendations; the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns; sidewalks be located on the outside of the road; and letters of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Garvis Sims, Jr., dated August 15th and August 28th, 2017. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-47? Let the record show there's one person opposed, Mr. Chairman. We'll pull that off consent for right now, and we'll see if the applicant and opposition can get together and discuss their concerns.
Okay, Gault, this is yours. You have any comments on this, or before we...
Yeah, I think it would be good, maybe an easy question or something, if you could get together with the applicant's representative real quick, and then if you still want it to be heard, we'll pull it from the consent agenda and hear it in the regular order, but maybe it can be taken care of here in a few minutes while we...
Okay, Garvis, stand up. This is Mr. Sims, he's the attorney for the applicant. He'll be glad to meet with you out back. It could be that he can answer your question. If not, as we just heard from Gault, we'll be glad to hear the case. So why don't you get with Mr. Sims right now and see if he can answer your question? Thank you very much. Okay, John.
Thank you. Rezoning case Z-50, Storage Development Group requests rezoning from OS to NRC for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in Land Lot 709 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road, north of Sylvan Drive. Staff recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on July 19th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; district commissioner to approve the landscape plan and architectural plan; fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; stormwater management division comments and recommendations; department of transportation comments and recommendations; applicant to meet the Canton Road design guidelines; and applicant's letter of agreeable stipulations dated August 13th, 2017, with the following additions: Add to the end of paragraph number 23, developer to install deceleration lanes at both entrances. B, to paragraph number 27, add subset D, which states would be in direct conflict with these stipulations or county code. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-50? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-51, Perdara Group LLC requests rezoning from R-20 to R-5 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 694 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Weaver Street and on the east side of Madison Street. Staff recommends approval to the R-5 zoning district, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on July 6th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; variances as stated in zoning comments; stipulations of previous R-5 cases for the subdivision, which are Z-71 and Z-148 of 2006, not otherwise in conflict; maximum impervious coverage to be 40% per lot; fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; stormwater management division comments and recommendations; department of transportation comments and recommendations; and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-51? Mr. Chairman, there's one person opposed, so we'll pull that one off consent.
Yeah, I've spoken to Mary Rose Barnes about this, and I do think we need to pull it, so we'll hear this one a little bit later. Okay, thank you.
And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. L-U-P-18, Burn Hickory Church of Christ Incorporated requests a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare facility in Land Lot 291 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Burn Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on July 6th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; daycare-related banner to be no larger than three feet by five feet; and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT to approve the traffic circulation plan. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L-U-P-18? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. S-L-U-P-10, Storage Development Group requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in Land Lot 709 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road, north of Sylvan Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on July 19th, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; district commissioner to approve the landscape plan and architectural plan; fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; stormwater management division comments and recommendations; department of transportation comments and recommendations; applicant to meet the Canton Road design guidelines; and applicant's letter of agreeable stipulations dated August 13th, 2017, with the following additions: Add to the end of paragraph number 23, developer to install deceleration lanes at both entrances. Paragraph 27, add subset D, which states would be in direct conflict with these stipulations or county code. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to S-L-U-P-10? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that complete consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, Mr. Sims is still meeting with the folks out back, so we'll wait until he comes back in, and we'll see what we need to do with Z-47. And we'll check on that in just a moment. But the ones that have been approved and mentioned without opposition, we do need to get a motion to approve those. Somebody?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented, removing for now Z-47 and removing Z-51. That means we're approving Z-50, L-U-P-18, and S-L-U-P-10.
Correct. Second, we have a motion, a second by Thea. Call for the vote. So that's what we'll do, and we'll hear from those folks. In fact, they're coming back now. Let's see how that's... Mr. Sims, you want to come up quickly, sir?
Garvis Sims, on behalf of Hernan Guerrero, who is the applicant, and the property owner. We just spoke with Ms. Jennifer Walsh outside, and we had gotten some inquiries from her, and our office responded to that. There's going to be a fence that's going to be built around the detention pond. Mr. Porter and I discussed that, and attendant landscaping to that. She wants, Mrs. Walsh wants to make sure that we don't encompass any of her property within our fence line, and we don't take down any natural trees or indigenous-type trees, nor any type of specimen trees. And when it comes to being able to locate the fence, that if we have to meander it, we do so in her favor as opposed to ours, meaning we go around our side as opposed to her side of the tree, if you follow me. I don't know how in the world the clerk's going to put that down as a condition of the zoning, but we'll be glad to wordsmith that better. But she is here, and she has erected her own fence in her yard off the property line, and I think she wants some assurances that we want in any way impinge upon the positioning of that fence or encroaching to her property. So as another condition, we'll certainly agree to that, as we're bound to do by law. Ms. Walsh, is that accurately?
Now, we can't take any testimony from there, so why don't you, very quickly, if Now, just now, we're not going to take your testimony relative to this yet. Did he correctly state your position, pretty much?
Yes, basically.
Do you still want to give us some further testimony?
Additional, correct.
You do?
Because the property in which...
Okay, well, just yes or no will be fine. Then we'll take, yes or no will be fine. You do want to give us some additional testimony?
Yes.
Okay, well, then we'll have to pull it then, right?
I think she just wants to clarify that, Mr. Chairman.
Just a clarification, because the property line that I addition, I put my own fence up, there's trees that back in, and it looks like, from the drawing, that they're removing a ton of trees that go beyond that. And the last thing I want is them to undulate and go into my property.
If we ask Mr. Peterson to be sure and clarify that for the record, we possibly don't need to take your testimony. That's what I'm getting at. Did he correctly state what your concerns are?
Yes.
Is that just around the detention pond, your concern about ma'am, or is it the entire thing?
It is the fact that there are trees, and it could easily be assumed that the property undulates, and it does not. It goes completely across, and my trees are about 10 feet in from where the neighbor's fence starts on an actual property line, and mine comes in 10 feet, so it's an undulation of trees.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you willing to have a surveyor come in and mark Ms. Walsh's property line? And that way, there's an indication of nothing can be done beyond the property line, even though the fence is further into your property, correct?
Sure. We can, Mark Lee, actually, our engineer's here and participate in the conversations, Ms. Powell. So we've got two weeks, and I think in the first couple of days after today, we can have that with specificity, and we'll wordsmith it to her advantage and pleasure, and make sure that she's fine. So we would ask that it stay on the consent agenda, and that I rephrase it or add these additional stipulations so that she is modified.
Jennifer, we're talking about an addendum to the stipulations. If we can do that, you'll get a copy of that from Mr. Sims. If you still have concerns at the BOC hearing, you just stand up and say so, and they'll be glad to hear you. But I think Garvis is right. I think we can leave this on the consent, as long as we're all in agreement about what it is Garvis is going to resubmit.
I agree.
Okay, all right, we're fine. We'll leave it on consent agenda. Now, what clarification do we need?
Can we just add one thing to the consent agenda for this case? Can we say that Mr. Sam submit a letter to the zoning division manager by next Tuesday and copy Ms. Walsh?
Garvis, listen to what John just said and see if you're in agreement with that.
Would it be okay if we add a condition to the consent agenda that says that Mr. Sam submit a letter to the zoning division manager by next Tuesday and copy Ms. Walsh on it, with the language we're talking about?
Yes, I told her I would give her a call tomorrow. I'll prepare that over the weekend and submit it no later than Monday afternoon of next week.
Monday afternoon, okay.
And be sure and copy Gault on that as well.
Sure. It'll be a supplement to our supplemental stipulation. Maybe I'll try to consolidate it so we can have just one document instead of three, but we'll take care of it.
Okay, we're good then. Debbie, any concerns from you?
You need to add it back to consent.
I think just combining them before the BOC would be best.
And again, Jennifer, once you get this amendment or addendum, I guess we'll call it, if you have any concerns, you can always come to the BOC hearing, which will be on the 19th of this month, and state whatever you want us to know. Okay. Okay, Gault?
I was going to say, so I'll make a motion that we add Z-47 back to the consent agenda with the additional stipulation that Mr. Peterson mentioned.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. Garvis, I assume you're okay with all of this?
Yes, we are.
Debbie's giving me that look, but I assume she's okay and John, so we have a motion. Yes, one more, John.
Thea was the first second on that, so I think Thea would have the second, the revised motion.
Okay, so Thea, are you okay with what Gault said?
Yes, I am, but I still have a question of Mr. Sims. I'm assuming that Mrs. Walsh has not received the two previous stip letters.
No, ma'am. We sent out 180 letters on this.
So if she could get all three so that she could see...
And we, yes, ma'am, and we'll do that, so she can see the evolution of the application and what we've done, and be even further, I think, comforted by the fact that we're moving in the direction. But I'm actually surprised more people are here. We haven't had opposition to the level of vehemence, but we've had opposition about inquiries, and we've responded to it, and I apologize that we left one out of 180 out there, but we'll make sure she's comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an amended, and we have a motion, we have a second. Everyone okay? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Ready.
So that's what we'll do. We're adding that back to the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Garvis. And Ms. Walsh. Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir. Moving into the regular agenda, rezoning case Z-48, Shine &amp; Drive LLC requests rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of a convenient store at fuel sales in Land Lots 29 and 328 of the 19th and 20th Departments. The property is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Martin Ridge Drive. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-48? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
You want to... Yeah, I know, but you're going to take this one, right? Should be good. Just so everyone knows, we are minus one member today. Ms. Williams, who normally sits to Skip's right, couldn't be here today, so we've sort of ganged up, and we're all sort of covering her cases, and Skip is going to oversee this one. So, Mr. Sims, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
This is mine.
Yeah, it's yours, I'm sorry. When we get to Judy's cases. Yeah. Go right ahead, Garvis, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, good morning. For the record, my name is Garvis Sims. I'm with the law firm of Sims, Lark, and Huff and Bally, and represent the applicant, which is also the property owner, Shine &amp; Drive, Inc., and both Mr. David Meyer, our registered landscape architect, and Mr. Babar, who is the Shine &amp; Drive principal. Neither one could be here because of children's activities in schools, ironically, but they will be here for the Board of Commissioners' meeting. This is an interesting application, since I have no opposition. I know you have a rather lengthy agenda, so I'll try to be brief and hit some of the more salient points. What you're looking at here, this is a 0.952 acre tract of land, and what's showing right there is both the subject property and then the office part next door. So what we're really looking at is just the convenience store with fuel cells, and then the ancillary car wash that you can see there to the north. This is an interesting history to this. I'll be brief. It was zoned in 1987. The site plan then was for a linear type of a retail shopping center. It came back a couple times for other business to bifurcate or separate the existing office that's further to the west from the tract that's under consideration today. So it's been developed and utilized as a convenience store with gas sales and a car wash since 1987. In your zoning analysis, it states that it's been, I think, 17, 18 years since it's been used. Fact of the matter is, it was six years ago. It's a stop-and-go convenience store with gas sales that it was utilized, so it's a period of six years. But that's enough time to put it in, so even though it's Zone GC, it becomes a non-conforming grandfathered use. The only way to, well, we can't regain that non-conforming exemption, but to become eligible and entitled, we have to go through a rezoning, which is what we're asking today, which is really a downzoning from GC to NRC. Since filing this application, we've had conversations with adjacent property owners, one of which is Skip Harper, who, if you look at your north end and southern part of this property... and southern part of this property, excuse me, the north and the eastern part of this property, you can see it's surrounded by a recently approved R-20 OSC. So, Mr. Harper, through Commissioner Gunther, has been part of the discussions, as well as other property owners, as well as representatives of Martins Ridge subdivision. When I say representatives, I don't... May have been existing HOA, but of property owners within there. And what that's led to are two stipulation letters. The first, August 15th. And then, because of the input that we received from Mr. Harper, from Martins Ridge folks, and also with respect to paying homage or attention to the Dallas Highway corridor guidelines, you've got a consolidated, as I call it, a final consolidated stipulation letter. It covers everything. Everything covered in the first one that wasn't contradicted in the second one, but it's your final letter, August 31st. And concurrently with that, we did file a revised site plan. The basic reason for the filed site plan was to ensure that we were able to bring ourselves up to speed with maximum impervious surfaces under NRC, which are lower than GC, 80 as opposed to 70. So, we're at 69% impervious now, with the max being 70%. And what that did for us, and the original staff recommendations, the recommendation was to jettison the car washing facility in order to gain the requisite amount of pervious surfaces. So, we were able to do that. And we think by virtue of that, the staff's recommendation that that be demolished and done away with or obviated. We are seeking a rezoning from GC to NRC. This is as-built. This has been here since the late 80s. Been vacant, as I said, for about six years. The architectural upgrade of this is going to be vastly superior to what's there now, which is a dark convenience store with unbeknownst or unapproved by my owner. People parking cars for sale, and graffitis on the wall, and things of that nature. It's fallen in horrendous state of affairs. So, we will achieve industry standards, architectural guidelines and elevations. This is about a 2,800-square-foot convenience store. Of course, there's a canopy with the fuel dispensers, and you can also see the... Going back to the ease, the car wash. One thing you need to know, you should know, we've done not only a Phase 1, but a Phase 2 environmental report on this to ensure that the underground storage tanks are operating efficiently, and no petroleum products of any kind have escaped there. So, that was important from my client's perspective, because if you inherit or purchase USTs that are failing or have failed, you have bought yourself one heck of a financial responsibility. Now, there are Canton Road guidelines, and there are those... That was primarily done for those new properties that are developed. But there's also a component of those guidelines that cover existing properties. And so, what we've agreed to do is comply with that. Right now, we have existing parking spaces that run perpendicular to State Route 120, which is Dallas Highway. We can't do the islands in there, because it's already done, but there's an alternative under the Dallas Highway corridor guidelines, so that we can ensure there's a sufficient amount of landscaping between those parking... Existing parking spaces and the Dallas Highway corridor to satisfy those guidelines. The parking area is going to be maximally illuminated, both security lighting and standard lighting. The reason for that, we think, are for security purposes, but also it's going to be the downcast, dark-skY lighting, so it will not illuminate or escape the perimeter of the property with respect to what Mr. Harper plans for the R-20 OSC around that. In addition to that lighting for security purposes, we will have strategically-positioned 24-hour video monitoring of the property as well. Right now, there's a... I won't call it a lollipop sign, but it's a big old sign. Gee, that's a technical term, big old sign. But anyway, there's a sign that goes way up. It's leaning towards Dallas Highway, and that goes away. The guidelines for Canton... For Dallas Highway state that we have to have ground-based monument-style signage, so that's coming down. It'll be ground-based monument style, consistent with the aesthetic hardscape components that we intend to add to the front of the convenience store. And again, that's part of the guidelines. There's various components or various materials that you can use. And we're asking that that be subject to the district commissioner's review and approval. We don't have any elevations or renderings today. May have some between now and BOC, but ultimately, we would... We hope that with our adherence to the guidelines, and your trust in the district commissioner, that it will not only go light instead of dark, but the improvement will be significant. Also, during the six years of time it's been sitting there, volunteer vegetation has grown up, so we'll get rid of all the stuff that should not have been... Vegetation should not have been planted, or wasn't planted in the first place, and then prune, and establish a maintenance schedule for the additional plantings along the frontage, and then what exists here around the perimeter of the property as well. In discussing this with Mr. Gunther, specifically with his conversations with Mr. Harper, there is an existing dumpster. It's taken away. We put in a brand-new dumpster that's enclosed architecturally, consistent with what's in the area, enclosed, rubber lids. Your ordinance describes it, so that's how it will be done. But the key to that is that two feet off the back of the curb on the northern property line, from the enclosed dumpster extending westward approximately 200 feet, we'll be putting up a pressure-treated privacy pine fence, which I said will be two feet off the curb. Now, if you look again, this is a revised site plan. You can see where the curb's located. You can also see that we have jettisoned a good bit of the asphalt back there, and that's to comply with impervious surface requirements from the stormwater management, which gives us the latitude, if you will, to allow the car wash component to stay there. DOT wants us to use the existing points of ingress and egress. When this was built back in the 80s, Dallas Highway was a two-lane, sort of a rural highway road. There were no medians, and now there's a median, but no median break. I'm out of time. Let's just put it this way. Your staff's recommended approval. We would like for permitted use to be put back also to the car wash, the fuel sales, and the convenience store. So, with that being said, we ask that you follow staff's recommendation with those minor modifications. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. And just for the record, again, anyone here opposed to or wishing to speak to Z-48? Okay. We didn't have any before, we don't have any now, so that's a good thing. This is Mr. Gunther's District 1, so we'll ask him to lead our discussion. Skip?
Okay. I don't think there needs to be an awful lot of discussion. I think this is... This is an application that has gone through a nice orderly process to result in the stipulation letter that we had before us. Skip Harper, who is building the R-20 OSC that surrounds us to the north and to the east, is very happy with the additional stipulations that Garvis has been willing to put into the letter. Plan, people looking after neighborhoods, has written a letter to support this. The one thing that I'd like to note is that they asked that we consider taking the buffer areas to the north and to the east, and zoning those R-20 to help ensure that this would never be developed in any other way, other than what it currently is. But I don't see any need for that, since it's going to be surrounded by residential anyway. So, I think that just complicates the record if we do that. So, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other comments, questions for Garvis? Thea?
Would you be amenable, instead of trying to list everything that is prohibited in number 10, which does not include absolutely everything under that category, that it be for this use only?
I plan to take care of that in my motion.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Mr. Gunther, I talked about that, Ms. Powell. We're agreeable. Convenience store with fuel sales and a car wash.
Okay.
And excellent. That does simplify, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter?
Okay, just a couple of comments. Are you leaning towards a car wash remaining?
In staff's...
It's okay with that.
Okay. I guess two things on that. One, we'd want to make sure that it meets whatever standards there are for recycling. I know a lot of car washes closed several years ago, when they came in with, I think it's around 90% or something, and the water has to be recycled with the car wash now. So, whatever that standard is, that it meets it. It may be something that if the car wash sits in non-use for a certain period of time, six months, a year, or something, that it be taken down. Because I know that was one of the concerns, that these car washes just kind of sit there and become a blight on the property when they're not being used. And a lot of people don't want to pay to upgrade them to that recycling.
Well, I would point out that the name of the applicant is Shine &amp; Drive.
Right.
This is a key part of their revenue. One of their key revenue streams in their business plan. So, I would expect it's not going to sit there idle. They very explicitly asked that, you know, staff and its recommendations... Excuse me, I've got something in my throat. Excuse me. In staff's recommendations, they noted that the impervious surface, as originally proposed, was 77%, and that was over the 70% now allowed with NRC. And they suggested that the... Or recommended that the car wash be taken out, as you know, as a way to alleviate that impervious surface. But Garvis and his client, you know, felt very strongly they needed to have that car wash there, and they were willing to take other pavement out to achieve what turns out to be 69%. And I'm totally happy with that. I think having a car wash here is going to be important for the viability... The business viability of this business.
I think the question was, though, that there may be... And our county attorney might need to weigh in. Do we know if... Are there state or county standards for standalone car washes? It must be...
I might want to bring Tim up. He never gets to come up.
Okay. That's right. Let's find out.
Tim Davidson, County Water System. The only standard we have is for conveyor-type car washes. There's a recycling requirement.
Do you know of any state standards that are required?
I'm not aware of it. The only thing we have in our code, though, is for conveyor-type.
Okay. I just wondered if we needed something added in that the car wash needs to meet all state and county standards. But if we're saying that's the only one we have, then maybe that's...
And this would probably be a conveyor.
It's not a conveyor. People just drive through it, right?
Yes, sir. You know, with the breakers, and they stay in, they're gone, and...
Right.
I can't say for sure.
It's a conveyor type versus a... You get out and spray the car yourself.
No, you simply drive in, stop. You know, the process happens, the wash, soap, whatever's going to happen. And then, when it's blown dry to a certain point, you drive out, and when the light turns green.
I would guess that that's probably considered the conveyor type versus the... You get out of your car and you spray it yourself.
Well, I'd be happy to add a stipulation in my motion that says that the car wash needs to satisfy all state and county ordinances and regulations, to the extent that they exist.
Well, in keeping with our name...
That's what I was leading with that.
Right.
Yeah.
Then that's fine. We would concur with that. But in keeping with our name, Shine, we will make sure that it does that. And then you can drive, Shine &amp; Drive.
Okay, any other comments?
Just one other thing, since we're talking about the car wash. Do you anticipate or not anticipate that this could turn into, you know, hand car washing services as part of this service? Or will it always just be this?
From talking with my client, as a component of this, they'll have someone who helps just direct it into the car wash, and they'll have some people at the end of it with towels, drying it. And it won't be where you're sitting now, where you're sitting in your car, but there will be a human element to it, as well as the mechanical elements. Was that your question?
Yes, because I think of the... Where you, you know, bring in your car, and there's a team of people that, you know, does detailing or whatever. That's different, because then you have to have parking and all these additional aspects.
No detailing.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Okay. I think the end result is this is going to result in a significant improvement on what we see as we drive up and down Dallas Highway in this area, after six years of neglect and non-use. So, I'm ready to make my motion. I recommend that we approve... Recommend approval of zoning case C-48 to be rezoned from GC to NRC, subject to the following conditions: the revised letter of stipulations, and the site plan received by the zoning department on August 31st, 2017. All staff comments and recommendations with the following modifications: this is for a convenience store with self-service fuel sales and a car wash use only. And I would just like to further emphasize that by adding an additional stipulation that there are no onsite automotive repairs. That's my motion.
And the car...
And the car wash will satisfy all state and county ordinances and regulations and standards.
Okay. Does that sound good? Okay, so we have a motion. Any further comments?
So, you're letting item number 10 stand in the stip letter?
Yeah, it's redundant. We can strike it if you feel that's important to do. From my point of view, the convenience store with self-service fuel and car wash use only dictates what this property will be used for. I have no problem with that. Item number 10 remaining there, it's redundant.
Okay. But you know how a lot of our motions say otherwise not in conflict? And why create a conflict when, if that is totally struck, then there isn't any conflict between the motion and the actual stip letter? That's all.
Well, I think Thea makes a good point. I think you just delete 10 and let your motion stand.
I'd just like to ask legal counsel, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
Then we'll delete item 10 from your stip letter.
Okay, so we have an amended second. Yeah, we have an amended, so is the second okay with that? Okay, good point, Thea. Anyone else? Okay. Come on. Yes?
I might suggest... I like my FaceTime on TV23, but it might be an official candidate for the consent agenda by the BOC.
Yeah, I meant to mention that as well. I agree with that. I propose that this be on the consent agenda for the BOC.
Okay.
As part of my motion.
And the second is okay with that? Okay. All right, now, let's call for the vote. Not pretty, but hey, we got it done. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Okay, John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z-51, Pradera Group LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to RA5 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision and land lot 694 of the 17th district. The property is located on the west side of Weaver Street and on the east side of Madison Street. The applicant is present. There's one person here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Mike Wadsworth, you need to come up and be sworn in, sir.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Give us your name, and tell us what you plan to do on these sites.
My name is Mike Wadsworth. I'm representing Pradera Group today. We are the builder, developer, general contractor. Anyone who's been down Weaver Street, it's pretty obvious what's happened there. It's primarily an infill construction area. Everything is second-generation building. At one point, I think this was going to be developed as a mill housing. The lots were originally platted at 25 foot wide. And then, whatever happened with the history of this lot, it's essentially an assemblage of the six original lots. It's now being sold. Everything around it's been zoned RA5. We plan to subdivide into... We plan to subdivide into the three lots, two on Weaver, one lot on Manor. That'll all be essentially fifty foot wide and around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty foot deep, which as you can see from the aerial, you look at the houses that are going south of that and across the street, and it's consistent with the size of the lots. And we, the architecture we plan will be, will be suitable for the neighborhood as well. The thing that drew us to this location is certainly there's some beautiful old oak trees that are on it, some mature landscaping, which as an infill builder, something that we value and something that we know they're, our buyers are willing to pay more for. So we've spoken to several of the neighbors, we've sent out all of our letters. Everyone's, was expecting this from, for the most part. And no real concerns there other than please don't cut down all these oak trees. And our response to them has been, why would we want to do that? That's going to hurt us financially. So the two houses on Weaver have been designed that they would have a shared driveway with rear side entry garages. And the main reason behind that is to reduce the amount of concrete in those front yards and also save as many of the oak trees that you see there along Weaver. So as it stands, we're only going to have to remove one of the oak trees. It's one of the smaller ones. The bigger ones are on the north end of that lot. But the one directly in the middle have to come out for the driveways. And as of now, the rest of them will, will be preserved for the most part since they're already on the border. Houses thirty-four to thirty-five hundred square feet. We're going to be looking to price them from seven seventy-five to eight twenty-five. We've already got a, a list of some tentative prospective buyers because we're doing something similar within a mile or two radius of there. And we've kind of been talking about this over the last couple of months. So the interest is there. I think, you know, anyone who, who drives the neighborhood and sees the site, it's, it's, it's almost common sense as to what we're going to be developing here.
Okay. All right, if that's it, thank you, Mike. Have a seat. Let's call up the opposition at this time, please.
Good morning. I am Mary Rose Barnes, Oakdale Community Association. OCA Board stands in opposition to this application. It flies in the face of the RA five code and the MDR land category, land use category, with its staff's calculated density of six units per acre. Such a basic deviation from prescribed code would nullify RA five density limitation, limit protections in future developments. This applicant has chosen not to supply a letter of stipulations, renderings, elevations or depictions of the placement of the houses or to delineate the tree safe plan he's speaking of, leaving us in the dark about many important details of the project. Their mere description, craftsman style home, does not rise to the level of disclosure that we have a right to expect from those who wish to build in our community. Neither were their variances divulged in the summary of intent. The applicant stated that variances were not applicable to this project. However, staff lists variances as wave the rear setback from thirty to twenty feet, lot width from seventy feet to forty-nine feet, and distance between houses fifteen, uh, ten feet instead of fifteen feet. These are major variances and are applicable to the project. The appearance and safety, for the, and the appearance and safety for the neighborhood. A fifteen-foot separation between houses is vital for fire safety. No matter how expensive the houses are, they still burn. The only stipulations referred to in the paperwork came from a recommendation from staff that stipulations from a project in the area dated two thousand and six be included, when not in conflict. However, there are major conflicts with this application and those are the former project. Z, Z seventy-one is built at four point nine nine units an acre, not six point, six units an acre, with a minimum size of twenty-four hundred square feet, not thirty-four hundred feet, and with fifteen feet between the houses. Therefore, by definition, this application is in conflict with other development in the area. We recognize the recent trend for larger, more expensive homes in our neighborhood, which has been, which has, and this neighborhood has been developed piecemeal by two developers and several small builders. However, approval of such an aberrant three-house subdivision would allow development that would not conform to the size, appearance, or density of recent development. In addition, violating the RA five code and disregarding the MDR land use category would set a dangerous precedent for our community in all of Cobb County. With respect to your request that you recommend denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Mr. Wadsworth, come on back up. Uh, this is in District Two, so I'll, I'll try to lead our discussion here. Have you built other homes on either of these streets, Weaver, Manor?
No, sir.
Okay, but you have built in the area.
Correct.
Okay, describe, as Mary Rose requested, describe the facades of the house. What will they look like?
The facades are going to be four sides, brick water table. So that's going to be up to the first floor. Joists will be brick or masonry material. The front of the house is going to be seventy-five to eighty percent brick or stone. And then the sides will either be shake, board and batten, or a fiber-sementitious lap siding like hardy. The interiors, ten-foot ceilings on the main floor, nine-foot on the second. There's no prefabricated shower units. Everything is going to be custom tiled shower surrounds, tiled floor. All of the flooring on the main floor and in the hallways upstairs will be site-finished hardwoods. The only carpet in the house will be in the secondary bedrooms. All stone countertops, semi-custom cabinetry, kitchen aid, stainless steel appliances. Craftsman in nature, but also with a contemporary spin. And in my opinion, an improvement upon even the newer construction that were, is already located on Weaver Street.
Is it safe to say the exteriors will and the facade will resemble the other homes that are on those two streets?
Absolutely.
Okay. You met with the neighbors. I know you and I talked about this. I know you met with some of the neighbors recently. What were their, what concerns did they express to you, if any?
The only concern has just been that we don't clear cut these beautiful oak trees, which, you know, as I stated earlier, we have no intentions of doing that. And there's a reason why we're attracted to this development in the first place.
And, and you and I talked about protective fencing around the trees at the drip line, which will stay up during the construction phase to protect those trees. And you, you said you were willing to do that, correct? I know you said one tree would come down. I think there's actually two, but there's one that I saw that was damaged and I think that probably has to come down.
Right, there, right.
And then one in the center that I know does have to come down. You mentioned a shared driveway for the two houses that are on Weaver Street. Tell us about that. What, what's the, why, why would you do a shared driveway?
If you look three lots down or south on Weaver, there's an example of a shared driveway there, right there. They've kind of got a little bit of a turnaround in the shared driveways with a rear side entry garage. Whether we have the turnaround at the front is to be determined. Right now, that wouldn't be our plan. It would just be a straight pull-in with a flare out on either side for turning in and out. But there's your shared driveway.
Okay, so that allows you to better position the houses and to save those trees.
Correct.
Is that a safe statement?
Absolutely.
Okay, I got you. The variances that, that Mary Rose mentioned as well, I noticed that there were some variances. I don't think she got it exactly right. Your application said your front setback would be thirty-five feet. Is that still the case?
Not thirty-five feet. What we're looking for is to mirror the setbacks of the other homes around us.
So to line up with the other homes. John, do we know what those other setbacks are? I thought they were thirty to thirty-five feet, twenty-five feet. So you, you intend to mirror those?
Correct.
Okay, and as far as the rear, I thought I saw thirty-five feet. What are the, what's the rear setback going to be?
The rear setback on the neighboring houses is fifteen to twenty feet.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Can we do twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so again, mirroring what was already approved for all the other houses that are RA five in the neighborhood. How about the distance between those two homes?
Right now, the neighboring setbacks are five feet for the sides. So that would give us a ten-foot distance in between the houses.
So ten feet between the houses, five feet to the lot line.
Right, and then the driveway side will have more than ten feet. Will have fifteen feet in between the houses on the driveway side.
Okay. All right, that's better. That's much better, in fact. Okay. Those are large houses. They do it, they're not larger than all the houses in the neighborhood. In fact, one house right next door to this lot is probably bigger than what you're going to build. And I was really concerned about that neighbor. And I'm surprised they didn't come forward and ask you for some plantings, buffers, or fencing or so forth. But you know the one I'm talking about?
I do.
It's, it's the one closest to the single lot. You heard anything from that neighbor?
I haven't. And with his location at the end of Manor, there's two other infill speculative homes that have just been built across the street from him. But for a while there, there's four or five lots there that are owned by another developer. We've tried to purchase them. For whatever reason, they're holding off building. They would be the same sized lots that we would have. But I imagine that neighbor's welcoming, you know, people living next door to him and not vacant, security concerned areas.
I'm sure he's thrilled you're going to save the trees on the back of the lot there. That, that's a good, good point as well. The other issue that I had was stormwater control, which Mr. Braden and I discussed very briefly at our work session. You do understand that that is a big issue. You're going to need to work, work out at plan review. But all the stormwater created here does need to pitch toward the streets.
Yep.
And you've told me that you can accomplish that, correct?
Right.
Okay. As far as the RA five standards go, every house on these two streets has the same basic standards that you're asking for and has been approved. And I don't know how many houses we have here, but twelve or fifteen anyway, that were all RA five with basically the same standards. And they were approved by the BOC. I've seen the houses that you build. They are, they will fit the neighborhood. They're very attractive. In fact, I frankly consider them to be an upscale from what some of the houses I've seen here were approved at RA five. So I really don't have a problem with this. Any questions from anyone else for Mike?
Well, just a statement that, and I go back to the, the application we just approved where we removed that item from the stip letter, item number ten for the uses, because we use this language not otherwise in conflict. So to go back to two thousand and six with a, a different developer and different housing and say, follow these stipulations, I think is inappropriate. At minimum, there should be a stipulation letter for these three homes. This, this project is not related to those other projects. And I don't know whether you were not interested in doing a stip letter or whether staff said, oh, don't worry, you can use these stip letters from two thousand and six. So I guess I'd like a clarification either from you or from staff with respect to the rationale behind using old stipulations where the house sizes were different, the setbacks were different. And then we're going to say, as we do under staff recommendations, approve this not otherwise in conflict. That creates a huge problem. Why do you want to create that situation? Just do a stip letter for these three houses.
Do you want me to take that, John?
How about, how about if you take the part about the, the stipulation letter?
Mm-hmm.
And now I'll take the rest of it.
Um, I think we would be fine submitting our own stip letter. I don't know that anything would change from what was approved previously. And I think the logic there is really the consistency of the neighborhood. Whereas this is now the minority there and the majority in this neighborhood is already conforming to these stipulations. So we're keeping with the consistency of the subdivision at this point. And it's just having to be done piecemeal because this tight neighborhood was originally zoned R twenty. And I mean, maybe the RA five should have spread over the rest of these lots. But as you can see, there's a big undeveloped piece on Manor just south of us. A developer owns that. But everything else, for the most part, has been built out the way that we're requesting to, to finish these other three lots.
Okay. When, when I hear, hear the word variance, I think, what is the hardship? So you don't have a hardship. You're just mirroring what, what is already there. But to me, a variance requires a hardship. And you're building bigger homes and you're putting them, you're reducing the setbacks. So that is going to be a difference in appearance from some of the other homes that are there that are smaller. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson.
As far as using the, the previous conditions, that's something we've typically done in this subdivision here. Originally, this entire subdivision was zoned R twenty and they were all non-conforming lots in here to begin with. And when this first came in, two thousand and six, I think, the attorney at that time put a, a stipulation letter together that was agreeable to the district commissioner, commissioners at that time that agreed to certain things because the roads are where they are, the lots are where they are. They, they can't change that. So there are things with the two thousand and six letter that we need to incorporate to this development. There's things like, you know, they need to pay Cobb DTA eight thousand dollars so they could widen the road, put sidewalks and drainage structures. There's things in there that relate to how the house looks on the inside and the outside, which they meet. They exceed in certain things. There's minimum house size. There's a condition for buffering along the backs that we need to carry over. There's a condition that the septic tanks be freshly pumped out before they do construction. We need to keep that. I think there's conditioning that, that the house be boarded up within thirty days of closing, of closing, so that no vagrants would get in there. So there are things in the, in the letter from eleven years ago that we still need to carry over. Yeah, are important.
I understand that. So let's use the two thousand and six letter as a template as to what applies to these three homes. As opposed to, you know, resurrecting something that's eleven years old. Certain aspects of it are relevant, certain are not. That's all I'm saying.
And that's why we say not in, not in conflict. Do what, Skip?
It, it, it sounds like, Thea, what you're asking for is just to make it nice, nice and tidy and cleaned, cleaned up.
Yeah, nice and tidy.
Right, and, and I understand that what was a stipulation letter in two thousand and six is relevant in some areas, but not in all. So it's not a matter of recreating a whole new stip letter, but taking the elements that are relevant. And then it goes with those properties as opposed to determining what is in conflict, what is not in conflict. Let's make it very clear, this is what you're going to build.
Okay, we have a couple of choices here. We can either hold this case and ask you to come back with a stip letter that covers all of these points, or we can go ahead and pass it through and tell you, you must have a stip letter by the time we get to the BOC.
I kind of think elevations are reasonable. And if not, at least the district commissioner should be signing off on them, which I don't see here right now.
I intend to include that.
Okay.
I, I think we need the stip letter. I think I'm inclined to go that route. Ms. Blair?
Based on the, the comments that I've heard from, from the applicant, he wants to build something very similar to what's there so it doesn't stand out. I think requiring a stip letter before the BOC, I don't know that you need to hold it. But of course, it's up to the board.
Yes, okay. I think I would agree with that. Anybody else have a comment on that? Skip?
The only comment I have is, you know, the BOC has recently given some direction that they want things cleaned up before we send it up to them. And this is one where our eyes won't be on it before it goes up to them. So I don't know if you want to take that into consideration either. I'm fine whichever way you want to go.
Oh, they're pretty smart fellows. I think they can figure out a stip letter. They see them all the time. I think that's what I'm going to prefer to do is, and, and you can ask John to send you those stips from back several years ago. And then you've heard the comments here today, and then I can give you some direction there as well. So if you can have a good stip letter ready before the BOC hearing, get it in quickly to John Peterson so that he can get it on to the BOC members. I think that's what I'd like to do. Yeah, I'll, I'll review it for sure because I'm going to work with Mike to be sure all the elements are included in there. And I think the only big change here, because I think this is really an upgrade, is the size of the. And I think the only big change here, because I think this is really an upgrade, is the size of the house. Everything else seems to be equal to or better than what's dozens of houses that are in this area, or at least the 12 or 15 that are on these two streets.
I'd say the letter here says a minimum of 2,500 square foot house. I don't see that there's a maximum in this old stip letter.
There, there are some houses that are the size he's built, but they're not in the RA5 subdivision. You see the RA20 on the screen, those are, are much bigger houses. And those are in the 3,000 to 3,500 square foot range, and that's what he intends to build on these three. So it's not unprecedented, but all these RA5s that were approved by BOC over the last several years are all roughly, Mike, you tell me, I think they're about 3,000 square feet.
The ones due south of us, because they're utilizing what would be typically attic space in most homes, but their bonus rooms are finished out. The ones directly south of us, I don't intend on building anything bigger than that. They're 32 to 3,400 square feet, and they're essentially a three-story house. So, I mean, I think the main structure, first and second floor, would be 2,800, and we'd be potentially finishing some of the basement as well, or bottom floor.
Mr. Wadsworth, did you read the stip letter of October 3, 2006?
Yes ma'am, and we really don't have many changes to them. Interested in speaking with Mr. Terry and hearing out what he thinks we could add to it to, to meet your request. But, as going through, I mean, there's things in there I'd like to take out, like the 24,000 we would be paying to the DOT. But, at the end of the day, we're, we're very focused on mirroring what's in the neighborhood. So I don't want to build anything bigger or, or less than, than really what the neighboring houses are.
Well, there have been issues in the past where the neighbors expected a certain type of house to be built, and then that didn't occur. So that's one of the other things that I'm trying to prevent. So that
Right.
you don't get into a situation where the neighbors are upset as things are moving forward.
And
Yeah, Theo's right. We have had those issues, a couple of prominent cases recently, where things occurred that were a real problem, because we didn't, didn't nail some things down. I, I think you're gonna need to include elevations.
And I have samples here today, if you'd like to see.
Let's, let's see them. You can put them up, you can hand them to this fellow, and he'll put them up on the screen for us.
Oh, you can't see anything.
These are the two homes. This is one of the homes we just finished across from Teasley Elementary. It's probably two miles, as the crow flies, from Weaver and Maynor Street. This house sold for 740,000 a square foot. I think the total square footage finished was about 3,400 square feet. And this is the house we built next door to it. This was one lot that we subdivided into two, built both houses simultaneously. This one sold for 740 to 750 as well, with an unfinished basement. This house appears to be big, but it's only about 25 foot deep. So, it's just a very long house, but not very, not very, not very deep. Here's some other examples. This one's got a cedar shake exterior above the brick water table, when I was referring to a four-sided water table. This is what I'm referring to, where the stone would then carry around on all four sides. And we would add brick or add some architectural elements to the front, to dress up the front facade. This is just another example of the type of house that we would build in that price range. All fiber
You have side-loaded garages though, right? Not front-loaded.
These would be side-loaded. So I've had an architect go ahead and draw an elevation for the first house, so that would be what I'm showing next. This would be an example of what the house would look like from the front. The material aren't nailed down, but where we have siding, it would be board and batten. You've got metal roof on all of the porch overhangs. Nice columns, brackets, architectural shutters, mostly brick on the front, with a 30-year architectural shingle roof. And then here is, the grading on this one isn't perfect, but this is one example of, of the side entry garage. On this, we would recess the doors into the house five to six feet, so you'd have your turning radius. But this, this is close in, in size and elevation as to what we would envision building here.
So size of the homes that are already in the area are really comparable to what you're, they're not that much bigger than what you're wanting, what you're proposing?
We really don't want to be any bigger. I mean, when looking at the homes to the left from the street, they appear to be around 3,200 to 3,400 square feet.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Okay, and the only other thing in the staff comments is the impervious. Are you going to have 40% impervious when you're building 3,400 square feet, or larger?
Yeah, we don't intend on going over that. The house plans and the site plan aren't nailed down yet, for obvious reasons. But, in our conceptual drawings and drafts of the site plan, I don't think we'll have any issue with that. Some of our square footage is, is gonna be in this bottom floor. So, when we're talking total finished square footage, it's not just the main and second floor. We've got a third floor here that's gonna have finished square feet in it.
Now, the original elevations or photographs you showed us would not fit on a 50-foot lot, because you're going to take the garage and put it to the rear.
Correct. Yeah, those were just an example of the colors, materials, and overall design of, of the houses.
I think for the community's purpose, you need to have something that you envision putting on those lots with 40% impervious and fitting within the setbacks and the 50-foot lots.
Right, which would be the, the drawings.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mike. You can have a seat. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion on this, and we'll see where we can go with it. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Z51 for RA5 zoning, subject to staff comments and recommendations, subject to the site plan dated July 6. And as staff said, with the recommendations and stipulations from previous cases, and subject to the applicant submitting a stipulation letter and elevations. You can use some of the ones that I saw here, you're gonna need to work on them a little bit. Subject to installation of a tree safe protective barrier or fencing at the drip line of all trees identified to be saved. Subject to two, to a shared driveway on the homes that are on Weaver Street, and the facades of all homes to be as described. But, I, I think it's gonna be key to get those elevations ready for BOC to look at well in advance of their hearing and the stipulation letters. And John can provide you with any cop, if you say you have copies. But if you don't have copies of the previous RA5 standards, we can get those to you, and then I can help you with that as well. But I think, I think we're okay with this, as long as we nail down some of these details. So I think that's how we need to go with this. I'll take a, that's my motion, we need a second, and then we'll see what happens with discussion.
Ma'am, I'll second for discussion. Did you, just in case I missed it, did you say all staff comments? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, anything else? See anything else? Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so why, why are we including number three if we want, under the staff recommendations, if we want a whole new stip letter? Because now we get into this another, not otherwise in conflict. Mr. Wadsworth said there were certain things in those stip letters that were not relevant to him, so
The part he'd like to eliminate is $8,000 per lot paid to the county for improvements for the infrastructure.
No, of course, no.
I'm sure
That's not an option.
No, it's not. That has to stay in. But if there are others, we can review it, so that's a good point. We can eliminate that, that third item. The staff item of, of including the previous stips for several other cases too, I'm thinking. Yes, he's, he's We, we can, I can go along with that. Go on, are you okay with that?
I am, but did you specify in the motion that they have, he needs to create a stipulation letter incorporating
Oh yeah.
from those?
That's my intention.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, we need to have that in our motion, then if we're knocking something out. I don't know that you actually said in the motion.
We're gonna create a new stip letter, so I think Theo's right. Number three, under staff comments, can be eliminated, and we'll create a new stip letter. Includes those things from the previous that are applicable.
But I think we need to have that in our motion.
Two or three others that we need to
I don't, I don't think creating a stip letter was in your motion.
Yeah, it was.
It was? Okay.
Yeah, that was the intent. Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's go that route, and then Mike, you and I'll talk. If you need to talk to John, I'm sure he'd be glad to help you as well, or some of the staff there can help you. But we'll, we'll hopefully handle it. Yes, John?
Can we just clarify that, that I need that revised letter to be by September 12, which is next Tuesday, so I can review it and pass it along to the staff?
Okay, Mr. Wadsworth, you got that? Okay, I'll call you, and we'll work on that. Okay. So stip letter, okay, we need to add that then to the, to the motion. Revised stip letter to be to Mr. Peterson or to community development, not later than
September 12.
September 12.
So, so does that mean that if, if it is late, that it would not appear before the BO, not come before the BOC then, two weeks from now? Is that right? If, if for some reason there's a problem in putting that stip letter together?
It, it won't be, it won't take one day to revise this and get it to Mr. Peterson, so I think we'll be okay. Okay, anybody else? Let's call for the vote. Okay, Mike, you and I'll talk, John, you and I'll talk. Ms. Blair, you and I may need to talk, but we'll, we'll figure this out. But that's, that's how we'll go. You're gonna go ahead to BOC, but we have to have some things to present to them, which is not now in front of us. Okay. All righty, John. Need a break? We can. Yeah, we're on a roll here.
This is a messy business, but we're moving ahead.
It's only 10:30, you need a break? We can take a break if you want to. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break here, and we'll be back in, let's call it 10 minutes, we'll be back in 10 minutes to continue. Thank you. Okay, thank you, David. We're back, so we'll go ahead and get started again. What's the next case, John, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Resoning case Z54, Kennesaw Corner MF LP. Request rezoning from GC to RRC for the purpose of student housing and retail in landlords 502 and 503 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Big Shanty Road and George Busby Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z54? That the record shows no one opposed? Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Moore.
Good morning.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, and applicant in this application for rezoning. This application concerns 4.39 acres, located at the intersection of George Busby Parkway and Big Shanty. The application is to rezone the property from its existing GC category to the RRC category, and as stated by Mr. Peterson, for the express purpose of student-built, student-purpose-built housing, student housing and retail. It's a mixed-use proposal for this particular new development. The overview of the area that you're seeing here, to place it in its proper context, I think also is vitally important. The overview you see on your screen, you see the subject property, the four, almost four and a half acres that's highlighted. And if you just look around this intersection, on the four corners, and certainly to the rear of the adjacent of this property, the most prominent feature is the KSU home football stadium and soccer stadium that's being highlighted there, which is directly across George Busby on the opposite corner. You also have on the other two corners, you have a hotel, and you have the new children's healthcare hospital that will be built on those other corners. To the rear of this property, you see the large parking fields. One is Georgia Department of Transportation parking ride, and one is the Cobb County parking ride, just to the north side of this property. So you have large parking fields for parking ride purposes. What's missing at this particular intersection is residential and retail, which hopefully this commission, as well as the board of commissioners, will see. What we're providing in this, is this proposal actually is good planning. It's good planning for the area, it's good planning for this specific intersection, and it's good planning in terms of incorporating and meeting the student housing needs that will be both in the immediate future for KSU and down the road, as it continues to have strong enrollment growth and strong numbers, which is great for not only this county, but for this particular housing development. But what you'll see here also is that when you go east of I-75, this is the middle of the KSU campus east of, east of 75, where the stadium is. What we're proposing is to put the student housing and retail development right in the middle, right in the hub of that, which also demonstrates good planning, not only because of its location and such close proximity, being really literally dropped in the middle of this campus area and center of activity for students and KSU, but also because of the road network that's here. George Busby has been expanded to accommodate this. Big Shanty has been expanded and now goes under 75 to accommodate the traffic needs and vehicle needs for moving in and around the KSU campus in the intersections with 75. More importantly though, that only addresses your vehicles and cars. This has three bus stops within literally feet of this location, which includes the KSU Bob Campus Bus, as well as bicycle paths and planned trails and walking trails. All of the above modes of transportation are already present and in place, and can be accommodate what we're proposing. Now, turning to the site plan itself, I'll step over there just to go through with that. I think, again, the overview of this area shows how this proposed project and development fits in, not just nicely, but perfectly. Turning to the site plan itself, here we show the intersection of Big Shanty and George Busby Parkway. What you will note is you have the building here facing the intersection. What's shown in dark green is the bottom floor, first floor of that building, is the retail. And not just insignificant retail, but 17,500 square feet of retail, which will be located here. That retail has received significant interest from the market already, as you can imagine, given its location, and given the mixed-use nature of the surrounding area, and for what is proposed here for retail that's interested in the student activity that would be here, as well as the public that would come to this area for KSU-related activities, given the nearby and adjacent and across the street sports venues. There's been significant interest in that, and we think that would actually add to this area and add to the walkability and overall usability and functional usability of this area as a whole. You then have the remainder of the proposed project, which is the actual student housing units. You see this provided for onsite amenities of a pool and courtyard, and additional garden and courtyard here. To the rear, you'll note that this is, this says parking garage, that's a parking deck. That's not simply surface, a surface lot, but a parking deck, so that parking for the student housing can be accommodated in that structure. Adjacent to, on its north side, parking from Cobb County, and adjacent to the west, parking for Georgia Department of Transportation needs. And that will accommodate the student parking, student housing parking, and also add and aid in the secure access to that parking as well. Also, what's of importance that we have been discussing, and that is with Cobb County DOT. If you're not aware, there's currently a trail project, and that trail project for Cobb County comes right here across Big Shanty and up George Busby, then back across our proposed property. We have had multiple discussions and reviews with Cobb DOT and their engineers and our engineers. Where that stands right now is we're in a deep level of cooperation and coordination, as there will be necessary right-of-way here that will need to be acquired across this portion of the property. This portion of the property is Cobb DOT remnant from the George Busby realignment that will, the trail will come and weave through here. But then along our rear property line, there will need to be additional cooperation and coordination as the trail's expected to then encroach on this rear property line as well. So there's some coordination there, and we're, I feel very confident that we've worked through that with DOT. We're aware of it, we're aware with DOT what their concerns are, and how we might best address that with them, and I, and our offers to that end. Also, has been noted by staff, though, there are some variances that are being requested. Primarily, these are, and actually they're setback variances. There's one note, as it relates to a proposed parking variance. We just believe that staff did not count that this is actually a parking deck. So we are not requesting a parking variance. We'll have plenty of room to accommodate the parking and meet that standard because of the deck. But as it relates to the setback variances, those are primarily, those setback variances are in this location here, and along our rear here. And the primary driver of that is, as we said, this is this Cobb DOT or Cobb County remnant, as opposed to the normal situation as opposed to the normal situation where your property line will follow the right-of-way and along the, the right-of-way of the road here. You can see it encroaches in in a very atypical shape, creating a point here, bringing the actual property line from where it would normally be at George Busby way into this portion of the property. As a result, that forces any development in, into this location here and creates the necessary need for a setback at that location. If it was a typical situation with the property line along George Busby, we would not need a variance at that location. Lastly, we do need a variance here because as stated, this is a parking deck or garage, which makes it a structure. But however, we feel that setback variance there is justified because we're putting parking against parking. And as a result, there really is no need for a setback in terms of that area as it doesn't serve the purposes of a normal setback. Also want to show you the elevation so that you can gain a perspective of how this will work and how it will look from this intersection. And you can see the proposed building with the first level, highly prominent retail level, as well as the additional five stories of student housing, which we think fits in very nicely, given the very large structures that are in the immediate area across the street. We do not believe this is anything but completely compatible and consistent with a college campus, which is what this intersection really is at this point in time. In terms of the overall project and community and proposed development, again, we want to emphasize that the modes of transportation, not including the car, are already here, are already viable and are largely used by students. That a student housing project here with the underlying significant retail mixed-use component utilizes that existing infrastructure and it actually complements what it was built for. What we're talking about here is smart walkable growth, not car-driven growth for this particular area. Lastly, want to just speak to the fact that the KSU student growth continues. They continue to lead in the many categories, enrollment growth amongst its peers. But it lags severely behind in terms of future student housing growth. What we're providing here is that growth where it's needed in direct proximity to that campus. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Representatives of the applicant are here to answer questions as well as our professional design engineers. We ask that you respectfully request your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just officially for the record here, anyone here in opposition to or wishing to speak to Z-54? One, okay. Want to come on up and get sworn in?
No, she wasn't there for him.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Give us your name.
I'm Tulun Abard from the Bells Ferry Civic Association. And I'm here in support of Z-54. We believe this location is ideal for a student housing complex. It's near other similar student housing complexes such as Y Point, which is right down the street there. And it's a good distance from established neighborhoods, which is a big point for us. We do have several concerns. One is the height. We just feel it's a little too tall. At 100 feet with the Children's Healthcare across the street at 50. Just like to be a little more in line. And then the other one is just security concerns. And based on issues occurring at other off-campus student housing in the area, we would just recommend the addition of a 24-hour onsite security officer. We've had issues at other off-campus sites. I'm not saying there will be issues with this one, but speaking with our local police officers, they've brought this to our attention as well as KSU students. But overall, though, we respectfully ask that you recommend approval of Z-54. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z-54? Not seeing and hearing an answer back to this board. As I mentioned earlier, a little prematurely, Ms. Williams is out, couldn't be with us today. And Skip Gunther is going to lead our discussion on this, so Skip, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to just reemphasize that, that Judy Williams is out today. But I have talked to her extensively about this application since this is in her district that she represents for us on the planning commission. What I'm gonna say, I, I think accurately reflects her view on what should happen with this, this application. First, the first observation I'd like to make is that, as Kevin Moore pointed out, there is a strong need for additional student housing for the KSU campus as it continues to grow essentially like a weed. It's, we've seen other applications for student housing that have not been in this general location, but have been further removed from the campus that we have turned down or recommended be turned down. But this is one that's in a location, even though it's not currently zoned for student housing. It fits within the, the framework of what KSU would like to do. And it certainly fits within the framework of what KSU needs to do. I've, I've seen a lot of data that, that has been shared with me about how KSU ranks with other campuses of other universities and colleges and so forth across the country. And I'm gonna reference, without going in detail, a U.S. News report where they nationally ranked KSU relative to probably three dozen different variables. The bottom line is KSU has a strong need for university-owned and privately-owned additional student housing. I think everybody who looks at this application sees that even though it's not zoned for student housing, it's a good logical location for it. There are a couple of issues. There's the issue of where, how, how do we deal with, with the, the planned KSU trail project? And Kevin talked about that a little bit. Looks like there may be the potential for a land swap with Cobb County to accommodate that. Once that happens, that's gonna probably imply some changes to the overall design. Then there are the variances, and I think that those variances largely will get resolved with any modifications of the design. But we do have to have a new design. We, this has to go back to the drawing board a little bit to accommodate the KSU trail project and, and, and the resolution of those variances. There was a concern about traffic, but this is located right next to parking that Cobb County owns and other parking that's just to the west. And there's, but there's a bus service, the KSU bus service Bob, that's gonna be largely alleviating any additional traffic that the students might generate. So I'm not sure that that's a, a strong issue to, you know, to worry about. So the bottom line is there's work that has to be done here. I think the appropriate thing to do is to hold this, we just heard it, and hold it for a month to allow the applicant to go back and work with DOT to accomplish what they need to with respect to getting that trail sighted where it needs to be and doing the land swap if that's what's gonna happen, and then modifying the design appropriately. So I'm ready to make a motion that we hold this.
The issues raised by the lady from the Bells Ferry Association, I think were valid ones too, and I'm sure Kevin, you'll be looking into those. I noticed in the original elevation, that's a rendering that we received. I noticed six stories above the retail, but what you just showed us is five above retail. Is five, you can just nod, is five? Okay, so it's left down a little bit from the original, but a total of six. Okay, so not, not seven, so that helps a little bit. And security, I'm sure you'll have something to tell us about that. Also nail down the number of units, which we still are not quite sure about, how many we'll have. And then, of course, the trail issue that everyone here has mentioned is, is really holding up everything. So I know, as you said, you're in negotiation with DOT about that and possibly some land swap. So I, I would support the motion to, to hold this so we can work out all of these and hopefully bring it back next month with all these issues resolved. Anyone else?
Well, now that we second, so I'll second for discussion.
Well, I haven't made my motion yet.
Oh, was it? I didn't realize that wasn't your motion. Okay, I'll make my comments first then.
Okay.
One, I'd like to know how many parking spaces? I know you say you're being compliant, but how many stories is that parking deck and, and those kind of things? I think D cell lanes are important, getting in and out of here, especially as you come up next to a trail. Having a, a less radius turn-in is gonna make people turning in faster, which is what's showing on the plan right now. And you're gonna be cutting across that trail at the same time. So you really want to slow down those cars as they cut across the trail. So I think, you know, a, a D cell lane helps accomplish that. You know, I, I do have concerns with impervious going all the way up to 85%. So I think that should be something in the redesign that we bring down. You know, I can understand the setback variances where there's this unique piece of carve-out from, of Cobb County property there that we're really not putting it right up on the street at this point. But I would like to see something done with that rear. I don't know if you call it the rear setback, the one by the parking structure because the trail needs to run through there. I don't want the trail being, the garage being right up against it and that. So I think that's a reasonable one, as Mike said, knowing how many housing units there really are and kind of what the configuration of them are, how many bedrooms are there? How many students do they expect to be in a unit? Because that may even affect the parking ratios as we look at it. Because if they're gonna put four students in a unit, we're gonna need more parking than, than the standard amount. I don't know that that's what they're doing. I'm just throwing that out there as an example. So those are my comments on it.
Location of the access points was another question mark that I had. I know that DOT has been concerned about. I know Kevin and John are aware of that as well. So as you're reconfiguring the plan, pay particular attention to the access points because I think the point that Galt just made about crossing the trail, that's, that's a very valid concern. I know that on the Silver Comet Trail, at some of the busier intersections where roads cross, they have everything from flashing signs to additional red lights. Something like, like that might need to be added here because we're gonna have a lot of students walking this area. So I agree with everything Galt said. Anyone else?
Galt took a lot of my comments, so I, I would echo those. And because this development is not on the campus, I'd like to know how you're going to handle others that are coming to rent units there, if they're not students? And the height of the parking garage? And whether that parking garage is going to have a carded entry for the students only? The residents only? Or whether it will also be open to the public? I think that's everything.
Okay. Now, I thought you did make a motion, but do you want to officially restate that?
I said I was prepared to make a motion to hold this, but I'll make a formal motion. I make a motion that we hold this application until our October cycle to allow the applicant to go back and address these issues with DOT and the variances and so forth.
Okay, we have a motion to hold, we have a second from Mr. Porter. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. So that's approved 4-0. So that's what we'll do. We'll take this up again in 30 days and hopefully have all of this resolved. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, Mr. Peterson, what do we have next, please?
Res zoning case Z-55, Cookout Restaurants. Request rezoning from CRC with stipulations to CRC with stipulations for the purpose of a restaurant with a drive-through on South Cobb Drive and retail on Church Road. Land lots 752 and 753 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Church Road, east of South Cobb Drive, and on the east side of South Cobb Drive across from Highlands Parkway. The applicant is represented as present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-55? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those listed addressed aboard, please come forward to be sworn in.
Have you ready, Mr. Moore?
Thank you. And again, good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for a rezone. And again, we find ourselves in a situation where I always think it, it looks strange when you're saying that it, the zoning application is from CRC with stipulations to CRC with stipulations because it makes it appear as to why are we here? But in this case, what we have is a, is a situation where we have two, two parcels. The total is 1.34 acres, so I'm gonna take them, you know, one at a time and talk about each proposed site plan and for the parcels. But as a whole, what you'll see from this area along your screens is you see the very large CRC all in red, of which the two highlighted parcels, which is what we're here about today for this zoning application, were part of the overall CRC zoning that was approved in 2007 for a large redevelopment of that existing apartment complex. And you can see that on your, on your overhead aerial, that existing apartment complex. These two pieces of property, which are highlighted in yellow, were a part of that overall plan. And we're zoned CRC with stipulations to a very specific plan in 2007. But as you can see, here we are in 2017 and that development did not occur. No surprise since you see that it was approved in 2007, it was approved and then the economy fell off the table. So it suffered that particular fate. But these properties, though, are owned by the same owner and as a result, were zoned in 2007. And now stand before you as CRC commercial property, but with stipulations attached to a development plan that's not going to occur. So what we're proposing is for those to be rezoned, again, to the same category, the same commercial CRC category, but with two new site plans for development of these two tracks. I'm gonna turn now to the specific zoning plans and site plans for each track. But as you can see, we'll get to that and go through kind of the whys and the wheres of that. First is the larger of the two tracks. This is about just over one acre. It's 1.04 acres. It's located here off of South Cobb Drive at its intersection with Highlands Parkway. This is a signalized intersection. And what is proposed is a cookout restaurant. And we, many, many of you who drove here today to the county building passed one that's directly across the street from the Big Chicken. But a cookout restaurant does a great job, serves great food and, as well as has a good appearance. So what is proposed in this location is a cookout restaurant. You can see that the site plan aligns with Highlands Parkway so that it can make good use of the signalized intersection. In addition, you can see the site plan accommodates the drive-through, the double-lane of drive-through traffic that will hopefully be coming through here and fits in terms of its overall compliance with Cobb County zoning ordinances and codes. You will also see in our stipulation letter dated August 30th, we've separated this tract and as to each tract, as well as to overall, calling for this particular site plan. It includes many in all of the, what I would call, rather than going through each one, but the typical and standard types of stipulations and conditions that you would expect for a commercial or retail establishment at this location in terms of landscaping, signage and as well. The only issue that we have raised in that stipulation letter is right here. We had a, at our entrance, there was a comment or recommendation from Cobb County Department of Transportation for a deceleration lane here. But as you can see, and as noted on our site plan, there are, is a fiber optic vault located right here. Telephone manhole and vault, as well as additional fiber optic and utilities vaults that are located right here where a deceleration lane would have to go. Unfortunately, what that means is it might be one of the most expensive deceleration lanes in the history if you were have to, to have to move or relocate those, those types of utilities, especially given their nature. What, we have informed DOT of this and they understand and that that is an issue. From, my understanding or gaining of it is that this is a state road anyway and controlled by the state. So ultimately, that's gonna be a state decision. We just can't agree to it because, because of that, we will agree that we'll modify that entrance to the greatest extent we can possible to make sure that it can accommodate a wider radius to the extent we can and avoid those, those utilities. Next, I'm gonna flip this over to show you the other site. Now turning to the, this is a 0.3 acre. Now turning to the, this is a 0.3 acre site located just around the corner. Once you go past the first, once you, once you would go past the cookout, you would take on South Cobb Drive, you would then take a right on Church Road, as you saw in that overview, and you have this much smaller parcel. What we've shown here, again, is a, a small retail development, maximum of 1,400 square feet. We've parked it appropriately. And to give you some idea, this is a site we believe that would be ideal for a very small boutique retail establishment, maybe even a Subway shop, sandwich shop, something of that ilk that this property can be utilized instead of simply being hung up in some overall CRC commercial site plan that is never going to happen. But what we are proposing, again, is a smaller retail building with this entrance here on Church Road that would serve, you know, that, that local commercial and retail flavor. We've included stipulations as it relates to this particular site that, again, are standard and typical types of commercial and retail stipulations that you would see or expect to see in terms of noise, trash, dumpsters, landscaping and the like, as well as how the building will look and appear. Additionally, we have included in our stipulation letter a list of prohibited uses. Since this does not have a current tenant, as a lot of retail uses or proposed retail uses do not have current tenants that we, that we talk about. And here in particular, what we want to do is ensure that it wasn't wide open to the, the full list of approved CRC uses. What we've done is gone through and eliminate what are otherwise permitted uses under CRC and prohibited them by stipulation here. And those are the ones that you would expect, adult uses, pawn shops, and there's a whole list of what are considered more obnoxious or offensive types of uses that you wouldn't want to have in this particular location.
With these stipulations, we feel that the, the particular parcel on Church Road can be a viable commercial retail parcel and would be and will be at, at the time that that comes forward for development. Certainly, the cookout restaurant that would be proposed and that is proposed for South Cobb Drive is very viable. We're very excited about that, especially given what is there currently. We feel like this would be a great repurposing of that site, redevelopment of that site into something that fits in very nicely with the intersection at Highlands and South Cobb Drive at this particular location and would be a nice addition for this particular area, and we think it's well-suited. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners with the August 30th stipulation letter, which covers the areas I referenced in the presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's hear from the opposition now, please.
Good morning again. I'm Mary Rose Barnes with Oakdale Community Association. The abandoned service station on Church, on, on South Cobb Drive needs to be redeveloped into a useful, useful entity. Oakdale Community Association Board supports the resoning of this, the South Cobb track with all staff comments included. We understand the difficulties with, with, in the right of way with the decel lane and hope that a successful accommodation can be made to provide for a better access, safer access into the property. However, we cannot support the rezoning of the Church Road track. The section, this section of Church Road is steep and curved, bringing property site distance into doubt. One of the accesses, access points to the adjacent IHOP is near this property, exacerbating the dangers of ingress and egress. The two possible remediation recommendations to alleviate the site distance would not likely solve the problem. Number one, the removal of obstructing trees will probably not allow for a safe distance given the steep slope and curved road. There are no right turns on red and loud at Church Road in South Cobb. There is often a long queue of cars on Church Road, especially during rush hours, making left turns onto the road from this site even more dangerous. Church Road is a much-used cut through. Number two, elimination of left turns in and out of the property would be a death knell for any retail use. The property itself is not amenable to retail use with its long, narrow configuration and with residential use across the street. The extreme variances that would be required attest to its unsuitability. The property should remain as it is, a part of the apartment complex. We understand that the owners of the, of the property are planning to renovate them into apartments and upgrade the existing facility. This section of the property cleaned up should be a valuable asset to that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z-55? You're not seeing and hearing any of this is in District Two, so we'll, I'll attempt to lead this discussion. Kevin mentioned, Mr. Moore mentioned, that this is a little different, a little unusual request. It's unusual for another reason. That is because there are two sites here and they're not adjoining, they're separate from each other. The one site on South Cobb Drive, which is the larger of the two, is just over an acre. That's a good size for the restaurant and I think it is an appropriate use for that site. And CRC with the stipulations that the Mooers are, Mr. Moore is presenting, I think, is, is very appropriate for that. The one issue that he mentioned is gonna have to be resolved, and that is the decel lane that was requested by DOT at the entrance on South Cobb Drive. I completely agree that there are some tricky situations here with all the utilities that are, that are buried just below the surface and they're not twenty feet deep. They are right below the surface there. And it's gonna be a very difficult and expensive moving of all of those utilities if the decel lane is put in. However, we also heard that this is a state road. And so that decision of whether they absolutely demand that decel lane or not is not ours to make, it's gonna have to come from the state. And so Mr. Moore knows that. He and I have talked about that, and that's gonna have to be resolved. Hopefully, it can be resolved by the time this gets to plan review. But I wouldn't remind everyone that there is a traffic light right there. And for a very long time, I want to say two decades or more, the business that's been on that site, which I think is a Shell station, I believe, has been operating just fine without a decel lane there. And South Cobb Drive at that intersection, very close to 285, is a very, very busy corridor. Probably 25, 30,000 cars a day go past there, seven days a week. And they've been operating fine without a decel lane. So just going on the record of saying that maybe a reshaping of the entrance might be adequate, but again, that's gonna have to be worked out at plan review, and I do understand that. The problem child here is the second little parcel, which is about a third acre located, as Mr. Moore said, right around the corner on Church. Mary Rose Barnes absolutely nailed this. It is in a curve, it is on a small hill, it's difficult to get in and out of that site. It's not developed now, there's nothing there now but some kudzu and a few pine trees. She's also right that the development right behind that, which I believe is Emerson, is, is an apartment complex that's going through a very extensive renovation right now. I don't know that they're interested in this site, although it does join their property. No one has told me that. Mr. Moore, you can nod from there. Have they come to you and made an attempt to buy it? Have you offered it to them? And, and they're not, well, we don't think that they're interested in it. So I think zoning that CRC like the one, like the, the larger parcel on South Cobb Drive is not a bad move. I thought at first that we might want to consider deleting just that portion to LRO. John Peterson and I talked about that. Delete it to Lowry's Office. But in talking to Mr. Moore, they decided to request the, the current zoning, the CRC, but with a list of disallowed uses, which in essence accomplishes the same thing. I don't think they went quite far enough. I think there are quite a few other uses that we might want to add to the list. But I think we can, we can accomplish that by adjusting that in the stipulation letter. But I agree, that's a difficult site. They've agreed to a maximum one-story height on that one-third lot, a maximum 1,400 square feet for the building. They would have adequate parking, but what goes there is going to have to be very carefully selected. So if we leave it CRC with disallowed uses, I still think that plan has got, whatever goes there, has got to come back into BOC to be considered possibly as an other business item. I think that might be appropriate because, because of the location. Church is a cut-through street. Church Road is a cut-through. It gets heavy traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons. It is on a hill. This site is on a hill. It is in a curve. So we want to be very careful. So even with disallowed uses, I think we need to be very cautious about that. Anybody else have any thoughts, especially on the Church Road site?
I absolutely agree with what you said about Church Road, about it coming back as other business. That's the best safeguard for that parcel.
Yep. Okay. Gault, anything?
Well, a couple of things. I just noticed in the land use plan, that's actually MDR. So commercial's not ideal for there anyway. Also, it's only about a third of an acre, which puts it under the minimum lot size for CRC, which once again is another concern. So I really don't think CRC is the appropriate category for that unless there's a whole lot of things, maybe, you know, if they want retail, maybe the LRC, which would limit the uses far more on it. Or maybe even NRC, something that's, that's smaller if you want to go retail there, or the LRO. But CRC is a pretty heavy-duty category and on a third acre lot, you know, we, we often go LRO or LRC on, on subsized lots. So.
I tend to agree, and that's the reason for the list of disallowed uses, which they came up with eight or nine, and I came up with another eight or nine, which accomplishes the same thing. And having them come back in for review after they have a tenant might be the way to go. Understand that they would like to have this as a retail site, and I'm not opposed to that as long as the use is correct, and that's, that's what I'm attempting to do here. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would, I would just echo that. I, I think disallowing anything to be changed on that parcel would be a disservice to, to the owner. Moving it ahead the way you're proposing, I think, makes sense. It just needs to come back for other business so that there is some oversight into what's gonna happen there.
All righty. Mr. Peterson, you think I'm hitting in the right direction on that? Because we talked about LRO, but I think this is maybe a better way. Okay, well, let's go ahead with a motion then unless there are other comments. I do think that this will work as, as proposed with the changes that I'm gonna propose here. Let's see if I can find my motion here. Well, you know it. Okay, here we go. I'm gonna recommend approval of Z-55 for CRC zoning with the stipulations as proposed for both sites, subject to staff comments and recommendations, subject to the stipulations and the site plan contained in the letters from Mr. Moore dated August 30th, 2017, with the following changes and additions to the stipulation letter of August 30th. And the letter of August 30th was very well done. It was divided into stipulations that they're proposing for both sites and then stipulations for each site. And that's the way they've laid it out, which is a good way to do it. I would propose that on the portion for both sites, that on number three in that section where we talk about the dumpsters for both sites, that there's some words that need to be just eliminated. The first sentence should read, "The dumpsters servicing the proposed restaurant and retail site shall be positioned in a location that is enclosed with a minimum six-foot-high brick enclosure on three sides with a solid wooden screen or gate." That's a little different than what's there because they were saying initially that that could be screened with landscaping, and I don't want landscaping to screen, screen the dumpster. We want to have a full enclosure. So that'd be the change to number three. On number seven in that same list, this needs to have something added to it. It should read in number seven, "Applicant shall comply," and, well, let's see, "Applicant shall comply with all approved stipulations as presented here. Cobb County Development Standards and Ordinances related to this project." And then the rest of the sentence can continue. That's normally something we put in the minor modification listing, but in this case, he's added it as a separate item. And by making that one change of adding the stipulations, I think that'll take care of that. And then in number 12, which is our listing of minor modifications in what may or may not be approved that, that way. We normally have six. He has listed five. We don't need the sixth one, though, since it's covered under number seven. That's just for clarification. If we move on to the portion that covers just the restaurant or the larger one-acre tract, number eight should read, "Parking for the proposed restaurant shall comply with Cobb County Code." I think that's what their intention was, but that really wasn't what it said, so we'll straighten that out a little bit. And let's go on over to number 10 in that same list. This has to do with that decel lane. This gets to be tricky because I'm not sure we can have much to say about that. Our DOT people would love to have the DOT, the decel lane, but ultimately, the state's gotta weigh in on this. So I would delete number 10 and have it changed to read as follows. "Given the numerous underground utilities found at or near the entrance, the proposed entrance, the addition of a decel lane as proposed by Cobb County must be reviewed and decided at plan review." So that'll have to be worked out at plan review, and that is something I'd like to see. However, reminding everybody that it's been operating for about 20 years without one because there's a traffic light there, and that moves traffic in and out pretty effectively. So I think that'll be fine. Move on down to the stipulations that are applicable to the retail track, which is the Church Road track. Number three, I would like to read, "The structure will not exceed one story in height." That's the way that should read, and then we, that's already covered on the 1,400 square feet. And then the more important one, number nine, which is the use of, or the list of, of uses that are prohibited, they list nine items there. To that list, I would like to add the following. These are prohibited uses: automotive and/or truck repair, including paint and body; also recycling centers; also group homes; also auto, truck sales, or truck sales or leasing; also video arcades; also tire and rim sales; and also adult novelty and book sales. And with the others that are already listed, I think we'll be fine. And then lastly... We need to go back. I missed one. We need to go back to... No, we don't either. We're on the right one here. Should I get the right one here? No, this is for the retail track. "Upon development of the smaller retail track, the one-third acre site, upon development of the smaller one-third acre site on Church Road, that development will need to come back in to the BOC to be considered and approved at, as an other business item." So we'll add that as well. I think that'll do it. Okay. That'll be the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll second that for discussion, but I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious, since I haven't talked to DOT, if we could have our DOT rep come up just to talk about that intersection just briefly, you know, that right turn lane? So Ashley is coming up. You, you recommended a, a right turn lane, decel lane there, even though there's a traffic light there and even though the gas station has been in operation for some 20 years or so. Is, is there a reason behind that? Has there been a lot of accidents or what, what's going on behind that recommendation?
Ashley White with the Department of Transportation. We did recommend that decel lane, even though there is a traffic light, more so as a, a safety precaution. We didn't pull the crash data at that intersection, but since it's a heavily traveled arterial, we don't want any rear accidents to, rear end accidents to occur. So it's more so a safety measure.
But there haven't been, is, is there a history recently of, of lots of rear end collisions happening there with the gas station operating?
We haven't pulled that data.
Okay. Okay, so I, I think that answers my question. I mean, there, there's a history there of whatever the traffic accidents are and, and, you know, the state is gonna weigh in on this. But I was just wondering, you, you're just doing this as a right, as a decel lane just because that's a normal practice to ask for that for something like this?
Right. And we also spoke with GDOT and they have told us that more than likely, they would recommend that decel lane there as well.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay.
And utilities would just have to be relocated, but they usually require the decels as well on the arterials.
Okay, I'm just curious about that since we hadn't talked about it.
I think Amy wants to weigh in on it as well.
Sorry. Amy Diaz, DOT. Though we don't have a level of service for that intersection in front of us, I know that intersection exhibit has a lot of congestion during peak hours. That's something else that GDOT... That's something else that GDOT's going to weigh when they look at whether or not to put a D cell lane in, is to get those right turners out of the way of the through traffic and improve operations of the intersection.
I know that's directly across the street from the entrance into that industrial park, which is a very large industrial park. So traffic flows not just on South Cobb Drive, which is one of the busiest roads in this part of Cobb County, but also in and out of that industrial park. And so I understand why the D cell lane was requested.
Correct. Currently, that intersection is split phased because of the alignment. In my brief conversation with GDOT, they talked about that they might look at trying to fix that, which will also improve the congestion there.
There are times of day when the traffic really backs up on highlands.
Yes, it does.
People leaving there, because it's a big, you don't see it from the road, but when you get back in there, it's enormous. And there are lots of people coming and going through that intersection. I travel it often, so I'm very familiar with it. But, okay, thank you very much.
All right, but regardless, the resolution to this is in the hands of GDOT.
Correct. They have to get a permit from GDOT for any access points on their right of way, and that will be something they have to have.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else?
I had one comment. That is, the stippler calls for a wooden gate. I believe our development on the dumpster.
It calls for what?
A wooden gate.
It does.
I believe our development standards call for a steel gate. So could we just strike wooden gate and say comply with development standards?
John, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
I wasn't aware of that. Well, we can do that. We can certainly make that adjustment then. Which item was that? I want to reference it. Okay, yes, it was. Okay. So it is, it is in the section that covers both sites, and it is item number three. And so we would change the part that reads solid wooden screen gate to metal as required by Cobb standards. How about that? Okay, that's good. Okay.
Mike, excuse me, Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Number five under the restaurant also has the dumpster language as well.
So we would need to make those same changes then on number five, under the section that covers the restaurant. You know, I don't know why that's even in there because number three is for both sites. It's redundant to even have number five there. That's why I didn't notice it. Truthfully, we could just eliminate number five because it's covered under number three in the first section. Do you agree, Debbie, or Ms. Blair?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's do that then. We're going to amend it one more time. Number five under the section that covers just the restaurant site is redundant. It's in the first part. So we're going to eliminate item five in that section. Okay, who seconded this? Was it Gault? Okay, you're okay with that?
I'm fine with this.
Okay, second's okay.
I'm second. I'm fine with those changes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let's register our votes. So that's the way we'll go four to zero. Thank you very much. John, what's next, please, sir?
Okay, moving into land use permits. LUP 16, Marshall E. Drinkard, request a land use permit for the purpose of auto body repair in Land Lot 504, the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Six Flags Parkway, west of Queens Ferry Drive, and on the west side of Old House Ferry Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here? Let the record show the applicant's presence. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 16? Got two. Let the record show there's two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Commissioners. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing?
I'm fine. Thank you for your patience. Give us your name and tell us what you hope to do on this site.
My name is Marshall Drinkard. I'm looking to put together an auto body repair shop right off of Six Flags Parkway. Basically, what I'm trying to do is accommodate the community. I noticed in that area, it's a pretty heavy industrial area. I stay right next door to a trash company and as well as a few, several other businesses around scattered out through that same street in that area. Just trying to put something together to where I can accommodate the community and be reliable as far as I'll provide for my family as well. Something small, nothing real big.
Marshall, excuse me a minute. We have the wrong one up on the screen here. Let's get the right one up. Okay, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. You tell us what you want us to know.
It's basically, like I said, just a small auto body repair shop that I'll be running singly. Nothing real major based on appointments. Something like five days a week, no weekends, during business hours, up to banking hours, something from eight to five possibly. That's basically it. I said nothing real big. I noticed I do have consent with my neighbors as well that's around me. I have like three, maybe four neighbors around me that's close to me that has given me a blessing to go forward with that. And as far as the fumes and painting, it's not going to be nothing real, real heavy. Like I said, something real light. I noticed in that area, it's a lot of things going on as far as the smells that's in my area that's been there quite a while since I've been there. And I don't really see too much of a difference with me doing what I'm trying to do with what's already going on in that area.
You've got plenty of time left. Tell us about the building. You're going to use an existing building, build a new one?
Well, actually, it's a little slab back there. Used to be a garage some years back. I wanted to add on to that slab that already exists there. The building that I have is 24 by 26, something small, not real big at all. We're trying to be like a two-bay, turn into like a two-bay list shop. And it's right there near a dead-end street, so there's nothing around me but Six Flags Parkway. The front yard is pretty far from the road. And like I was stating, right beside me is, I don't know the name of the sanitary sanitation place. Then behind the house, I believe, is another sanitation place right off of Lee Industrial, I believe.
Yeah, got you. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, we may have you come back up in a minute. Why don't you have a second?
Thank you.
Let's hear from the opposition now, please.
Good day, Commissioners. My name's Sonya Wheatley. I'm with the Mayleton Improvement Coalition. Want to make a couple of general comments about the application. It is, we clearly understand that the future land use plan for this property is industrial. However, the present zoning and the properties that surround this on three sides are residential. Even if it were zoned for industrial use, auto repair and body work is not allowed adjacent to residences. So it's a complication we see with this. Other cases have been denied for this reason, full zoning cases such as Z-40 with Elite. Land use permits, as you all of course know, are typically based for home-based businesses that have zero or minimal impact on neighboring homes. These uses by nature, such as salons, childcare centers, never include storage of automobiles. Specifically for this property, there is, we heard from the applicant, but there really is no plan for what would be required. There are no building permits discussed, electrical work, setbacks. If you look, the desire is to put the building, if you can zoom in just a little, where there are two cars parked right now, that's the plan of where to put this building. No plans for the building, what it would look like, safety and welfare. I know there are children, I believe in the home even. And there are no setbacks outlined. I think it would probably be too close, both to the private or to the public road, as well as the adjacent properties. There's no plan for storage and disposal of chemicals that could pose health threats. And most importantly, one of the big ones is that there is no driveway currently, not only to this park, this area, but there's no driveway to the property. They're grandfathered on dirt. Where would these cars be stored, even if there were a two-bay garage or a place to work on them? The other large thing is that with, as far as code enforcement, I saw in the application that it says that this is not a result of code enforcement, but there's been a single property owner since 2006. The owner, not the applicant, is the one who is responsible and would be responsible if this land use permit were approved. The history includes 18 code enforcement cases since 2006, resulting in, or, I'm sorry, which actually represents probably dozens of visits by code enforcement. Multiple high grass citations in 2000, starting in 2007, you know, van in front yard, expired tag on jack stand, burned trash, bagged trash in yard, mattresses, junk all the way through. Seven, 2011, in one complaint, seven visits for non-compliant and operable vehicles, untagged autos, parking in grass, outside storage appliances. The most concerning is that 2000, from 3 to 2017, which is recently, and I believe with the current applicant, there was a complaint in the notes from the officer, say picked up full bag of litter in backyard on concrete, but has to drive through grass to get to driveway. Non-compliance vehicle parked in backyard, loose litter, and a bunch of random outside storage in the carport and backyard. No one home, notice left, and mailed to the owner. I drove by Sunday. The backyard's full of I don't know what. So we ask, we always like to remind both the applicant and you guys that any recommendations we make, they're never based on the person. I fully believe that this is a good guy who wants to do the best thing for his family. It's just that this isn't a location for an auto business in the back of a house, surrounded by houses. We respectfully ask you to, did I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Let's have our next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ray Thomas, and I'm also with the Mayleton Improvement Coalition. I thoroughly and completely agree with Sonya's presentation a few minutes ago regarding this particular property. There's a couple of things, though, I'd like to add to Sonya's presentation. First of all, you know, we opened with a prayer, and the minister who opened the prayer mentioned understanding, wisdom, and love. And so we certainly, we certainly empathize with Mr. Drinkard and trying to provide for his family. However, we totally agree that this particular property is not conducive to an auto repair body shop. Now, in Mr. Drinkard's testimony, he indicated that in the area or the surrounding area, there is already a certain smell and stench in the area, and I completely agree with that. However, adding to that, you know, does not solve that particular issue. And, you know, we at the Mayleton Improvement Coalition, particularly in the last couple of years, have spent a lot of time, expended a lot of energy to try to improve the quality of life in Mayleton. With your support, the Board of Commissioners' support, we are making progress. And it is inconceivable to me that as we move forward in our endeavor to make this community a better community, that we would consider a business use such as a body shop in a residential area. Now, there are industrial sites located not too far from the property. However, if you were to take a drive through that community or to that particular area where the subject property is located, there is still a residential feel to it and a residential character to it. And let me kind of share with you with a few pictures here what I'm talking about. First of all, first of all, let me apologize for my photographic or lack of photographic skills. But this first picture, by the way, it's not on the monitor. There we go. Okay, that is, the first picture is a picture of a home next door to the subject property. All right. As you move down further, this is a home across the street. This is a home that is next door to the subject property. And the next picture, as you drive north on Six Flags Drive, you see that there is a residential character and a residential feel to the subject property. So in closing, I'd just like to reiterate my colleague's recommendation to the planning commission that this zoning, this LUP application be denied. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else wishing to speak to LUP 16? Okay, it's back to this board then. This is in District Four. Mr. Porter, this is your case, I believe, sir.
Thank you. And looking at this case, it is a little unique because it is a grandfathered, well, not grandfathered, that's the wrong term. It's zoned R-20, but it's in a future land use area that's priority industrial with a subcategory of industrial compatible. The most intense zoning category that we have in industrial compatible is light industrial. So if this, if they came in for rezoning, that would be the most intense category that they could reasonably apply for. And even that category would not allow a body shop here because, well, body shops are allowed in light industrial, it specifically says, unless adjacent to residential. And I think that takes into account the noise that body shops make, the paint and dust and all of those things that are inherent with a body shop just aren't very compatible with residential. And I think that's a wisdom in our code truth. You know, there's a, what looks like a treat area, there's a county right of way. And then you go over to heavy industrial, which is, you know, a trash company that I know there's been issues with smell there, and I know code enforcement's worked on those issues, you know, to try and get them resolved with things that weren't being done to the county ordinance. Also, you know, not far from here is the county water system sewage that sometimes has had a smell, but they've discovered a lot of the smells coming actually from industrial users there and are working on solving that. You know, I think as Ms. Wheatley said, if this was about the person, I think the applicant's a fine person who probably will run a nice business in that, but it's really about what's being done on the property and whether it's appropriate or not. And I just can't see a body shop being appropriate here. The other thing is the location of where you would build a building doesn't seem appropriate, and I have to wonder whether it would meet setback requirements and all of those things. The third thing is you typically, on a land use permit, you don't go out and build a building to establish a temporary use. And that's what we're talking about here. There is no building right now. They're talking about building a building. You know, that's something that's, you know, just not, I don't think contemplated with the land use permit. So with all of that, I don't know if anybody wants to make comments before I make a motion.
I just have a quick question, a clarification, if you would come up, Mr. Drinkard. I just have a quick question, a clarification, if you would come up, Mr. Drunkert. Do you own this property, or are you a renter?
Well, I'm actually renting right at the moment, but I'm looking to purchase within the next few years. My goal is to start a business, to have the funds to purchase the property.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, go.
Okay. Given that this just isn't compatible with the neighboring uses, I'm going to make a recommendation that we recommend denial of LUP 16.
Okay, we have a motion seconded by Athea. Call for the vote. And that's what we do, 4-0. Good luck. Remember, you still need to come before the Board of Commissioners, and you can plead your case to them and see if they agree with us, or if they want to let you go forward with it, okay? Thank you for coming. John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir. LUP 17, Family Choices Incorporated, Tasha Kennedy, requests a land use permit for the purpose of a group home for six residents in Land Lot 381 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Crossing Creek Point, south of South Gordon Road. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 17? The director show there are five people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you think you might want to speak, but you're not sure, come on up and get sworn in anyway. It doesn't mean you have to speak. We just go ahead and get this out of the way. Whenever you're ready. Give us your name.
Tasha Kennedy.
Okay, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
My name is, I am the Program Director at Family Choices, Inc. We are a nonprofit organization that provide therapeutic services and residential services for adolescent girls ages 11 to 17. We currently have two locations. We have one in Douglasville that's been existing for the last 10 years, and we recently opened one in Cobb County since 2015. The one in Douglasville is licensed by the State of Georgia and contracted with the Department of Family and Children's Services. However, the one in Cobb County had received a temporary contract with the Department of Family and Children's Services, and we are waiting licensure. The reason we were unable to apply for licensure is because code enforcement only allowed us to service four children, and the state requires you to have six or more children to provide you with a license. So, we've been operating just basically on a contract. And I would like to say, we've been operating since September 2015. We've had no problems with code enforcement at all. We've had minimum intervention from the police, and we also are in compliance with the fire department. We're asking at this point that our capacity be increased from four to six to allow us to continue to serve children in foster care and allow us to seek licensure with the State of Georgia.
Anything else? You have lots of time left.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't you have a seat? Let's hear from the opposition. And give us your name.
It's Verna Lacey Johnson King, the owner of 6619 Crossing Creek. I'm also a licensed real estate agent in the State of Georgia since October 1987. First of all, what you're seeing on display here is going to be a letter from Captain J.D. Adcock, based on the issues that we had in the community prior to this. I heard Ms., is it? Ms. Kennedy state that she's only been in business since 2015, and based on this letter and subsequent witnesses, you'll see that this is not actually what has happened. And this is the letter, and below are the signatures and phone numbers of the residents in the subdivision that experienced all these problems based on the business operating out of the home prior to getting any licensure. First, first half, first of all, there was never any notice given to us of their intent to operate a group home. So, we see that April 2016, you know, and 15, they were saying, you know, four people, and we're like, when? So, no notification, no letters, or anything to let us know. So, Ms. Kennedy stated there haven't been any citations, and you will see, based on the records, including the Secretary of the State, that they were already in business and functioning out of the property located adjacent across the street to my home. We've had several incidents. There's been confrontations from the residents that have been in the home, actual intimidation and staring us down, door knocking after midnight, blocking our entry to our properties. When we're attempting to drive down the street to our homes, they're standing in the street, and they will not move out of the way in a very antagonistic way. And of course, we're not going to strike them, but they'll come as close to your car as this is to me and just, like, stand there in intimidation. And our insurance and property values are affected, and we are aggrieved based on our insurance. My personal property was broken in during this time that they have operated the home there, and also, one of the other speakers that'll be coming up here shortly. And a licensed agent, as a licensed agent and a homeowner, the crime incidents can be pulled up. You know, anybody can request that information if they're looking for a home in our neighborhood. Also, if we're looking to increase our home equity lines or look at insurance, they're looking at the various crimes that have happened in the neighborhood, and since we've had the group home there, then there's been several incidences, which of course causes, you know, insurance to go up, and also insurances have actually been canceled. And so, we have basically diminished value based on this group home. Residents staying at the properties have invited other people into our neighborhood, and they hang out and loiter in the street and also block our entry to our property. The curfews are not enforced. We see the residents, and we've seen them out all different types of hours, whether it was through the week or the weekend. There have been no apologies for the incidents that have happened. We also had a standing basketball goal in our yard, and we look out the window and people are playing in our driveway. We ended up cutting the basketball goal down because we kept having intrusion in our driveway. And so, it didn't matter whether it was boys or girls coming. The police was always at the property. We couldn't get by sometimes because we got cops on both sides of the street. And so, you'll see that the, when the next presenter comes up, that we had to have the Cobb County Solicitor General involved based on this incident that happened at 6620, and there was a full court case based on what happened there. And so, we say no. We were never notified up until now, and they've covertly operated this particular institution there, and you can see it from the Secretary of the State filings and the various Cobb County filings, changed names, changed people, did whatever they could to try to get this property through the system. So, we say no.
Okay, thank you. Let's have the next speaker, please. The other speakers, if you want to come up and stand, you'll save a minute or so because you're going to run out of time. The other speakers can come up and just stand by the podium. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Geraldine Crawford. I live at Crossing Creek Point, lived there since 1989. I'd like to present this to the clerk to keep, if the board members would like to have it, to look at it. Just to let you know that I was not aware that this home at 6619 Crossing Creek was a group home until my home was broken into. It was trashed, graffiti, they stole my automobile. It was very devastating to me. I've lived in this commu, on this particular community for a long time. I would like to say to the commissioners, I know that the group home, they say they have a license. We were not aware of it. We've never been given anything until we saw this new hearing. So, I'd like for the commissioners to say no to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. Next speaker, please.
My name is George Huff. I live up the street. My incident was, I came home one day, it's about 5:30, went in the house, went in the house a good 30 minutes, neighbor across the street told me one of the kids broke him, got in my car and stole something. They don't know what they took, they just took it. So, me being, me being upset, I jumped in the car, went down the street to the group home, see, because they told me they lived down the street and who the girl was. Well, my wife getting upset, like, oh, Lord, he done went down the street. She called the police, and by the time I got Mercedes back, the police showed up. And the other time was when the kid's laying down in the street, this was about 6 o'clock, I don't know why he's laying in the street, but I almost hit this kid, just laying in the middle of the street and wouldn't move. Just sat there. So, I'm just opposed to the whole thing. I just wish they just go somewhere else so we can get back to our lives over there at Crossing Creek Point.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Next speaker, please.
My name is Rafael Estrada. I'm also going to echo the sentiments of everybody in the neighborhood. I've been there for about 13 years, and we definitely have had some, a lot of issues with this particular group home. They have knocked, they did ring the doorbell at one time around 2:00 a.m. It's a particular day where it snowed, so the next morning, I was able to track the tracks to that particular house. At that time, I was confronted by four or five individuals where they wanted to fight. So, there has been a lot of problems. If I'm not mistaken, during a year or two, maybe a two-year period of time, maybe 70 phone calls to the police. So, it's a very interesting situation that's going on there, so I'm just going to echo to the no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Estrada. Next speaker, please.
I'm Elaine, excuse me, Elaine Owl. I would just like to talk about the program manager that came to talk to me, and this is things I discussed with him. He said, I'm so sorry. I said, okay, I've had $300 stolen in pennies, a 57-inch screen TV, two cell phones. I had where they just accumulate around the cul-de-sac and threw a thick glass right below my mailbox, run over it, split the tire. Back door was just smashed. Ms. Crawford's car was stolen. I showed him the graffiti and the grudge, and I would not repeat the words that was there. It was about white females, so. He said, I'm just so sorry. I said, but being sorry doesn't fix the damage. I said, are you going to pay me for my tire? I had to go buy a new tire. Are you going to pay for the car that got stolen? Are you going to pay to paint the house inside because they painted, sprayed all this stuff? You going to fix the back door? I went, no. You don't have house insurance to turn it into? I said, why turn it into a house insurance? They cancel insurance, or they go up on it. I said, so there's, there was communication. It was the program manager before this one, and he was over the one in Douglas County also. And that's about the only thing I wanted to add, because they pretty much covered everything, but it was terrible when the first speaker said about trying to go down the road, it's like this, and they was this far from the car, and just, you know, it's very intimidated. And, you know, we're all to the point in our life that we would like to just sit back and relax and not have to worry about any kind of retaliation. I worry about that now. And the police cars was over, I mean, like they said, it was, they were there constantly with the EMTs. They would come and ask, do you have cigarettes? Can we, can you give us some money? Oh, by the way, would you mind taking me over towards Six Flags? And no. You know, so it was, I can't tell you how severe a situation it was.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you for listening.
We, no, that's all right. We got you. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else to speak? I tell you, we are out of time, though, and I think we get the point, and the issues that were made were well taken, so let's move it back up here. This is also in District 4. Mr. Porter?
Okay.
Hold on. He'll probably call you up. Just have a seat. Go ahead, go.
Okay. I guess I'll call Ms. Kennedy back up, just so that I'll let me give her a chance to address some of what was said here and, you know, keep it short, but I'll let you respond to a little bit of what was said so that they can hear your response as well.
And I do, and I understand their concern, but I want to make it clear that the agency that they're talking about was Haven Hearts. We've been there for the last two years. The incidents that they're talking about weren't from 2015 to present. They were from 2015 way back. You can call the police department, you can call code enforcement. We sat down with code enforcement before they even allowed us to do four children. They told us about the community. They told us about the men that were in that home, and I understand it was a boys' group home. They told us all the problems, and code enforcement told us that if we have one problem with you, we're going to come and shut you down. From 2015 to present, they have not. So, I understand, I think that it's kind of like a misunderstanding, that they kind of just proved my point, that we're not a problem in the community because they don't even know that it's girls there now. And we don't let our children roam the neighborhood. We drive them to school and back. They don't even take the school bus. We don't sit outside, we don't talk with the neighbors, we do none of that. So, all of the incidents, every last incident that they said were from the previous provider, and that was Haven Hearts Academy. I'm from Family Choices. I have a facility in Douglasville and have been a responsible group homeowner for the last 10 years. Before we even sat down with code enforcement, the police department had already checked my record in Douglasville and saw that we're not a problem there either. Is, I know that a lot of times people don't want these kind of facilities in their neighborhood, and I understand that, but we have been in the neighborhood and have not been a problem. Can I say one more thing? I think another different thing is that we don't take children from the Department of Juvenile Justice. Our children come from the Department of Family and Children's Services, which is kind of a difference. When you deal with the DJJ children, you're dealing a lot with behavior problems. When you're dealing with DFACS children, you're dealing more with neglect and abuse. Most of our girls that were sent to us was there for no reason of their own. It was their parents' issues. So, I understand, if this was my home, and I don't fault any of you for coming, if this was my home, I would probably come too, but I want you to understand that the two agencies are different. It's not the same. The same agency that they're talking about is not Family Choices. It was Haven Hearts. And you all can look it up, because it's a totally different agency.
All right. Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, or?
How many of your kids come to this facility through DFACS?
All of them.
All of them. So, you're an approved DFACS facility?
Exactly.
Okay, because when I called them, they didn't have a lot of information about you.
We're in Douglasville and Cobb County...
I'm talking about Cobb County DFACS that would control this home.
Correct. And they've given us temporary approval, and they told us that we would have to seek licensure if we wanted to continue, and that's why we had to go through zoning.
Okay, and how many are there now? How many children are there now?
Well, right now, our lease is up in September, so July 30th, instead of us taking more kids and providing home for them, we decided to end it there because we didn't know what the outcome would be for zoning. The last thing I wanted to do was house four children, and then the zoning approval was not in our favor.
So, you have four children there now? Four? Four there now, and you're asking for six?
We're asking for six.
Okay. And where does your funding come from to take care of these kids?
The Department of Family and Children's Services.
Okay, got you. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. What is the age range?
What is the age range?
We take 11 to 17.
11 to 17?
Correct.
And only girls?
Only girls.
Okay.
I've, I've got some questions. You've got four there right now or maybe three? I wasn't real clear from that. You, you can handle four, but it sounds like you didn't renew something, so you only have, you still have four, you said?
At present, we don't have anyone.
You don't have anyone?
Because I didn't want to continue to have kids come in.
But you have the capacity currently for four.
We've always had a capacity of four.
What, what do you have? How many bedrooms do you have in the house?
How many staff?
How many bedrooms?
There's three bedrooms upstairs, and then there's a basement downstairs.
Okay, so they would, the, the girls would be two pared off in different rooms.
Correct.
And you have full-time staff in there?
Absolutely.
24/7?
24/7.
And that's what, one person or?
One person for four children. If we go to six, it will be two staff persons there at any given time.
That's what the requirements are?
Correct.
Yeah.
Are there sprinklers in the house?
Yes, it is.
So it is a sprinkled house?
Yes, sir.
So the fire marshal has taken a look and?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And I, and I do have to comment that when I drove down to look at the house, it was very neat, and you should, you should be commended for the way you seem to be taking care of that property.
Thank you.
At least from what I saw.
Thank you.
You said your lease is up, so you're, you're renting the property?
Correct.
When is the lease up?
In September.
And that's this month?
Correct.
Okay, so what are you going to do? You're going to extend the lease or you're just going to wait and see what happens with your permit?
I'm going to wait and see what the outcome is on, because if we aren't approved for zoning, we won't be able to get licensed. If we're not able to get a licensure, then we won't be able to continue.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
One more thing. I think you can have a seat. I'm going to ask maybe one or two people to come back up and tell us what you've experienced since 2015. We had a lot of before that, but I'm just curious, you know, kind of what you've experienced. Say your name again for the record.
Vernalee C. Johnson King. And based on the records, Ms. Kennedy is the person of record as far as property, based on what I'm looking at there. I've never seen Ms. Kennedy until this very day, as God is my witness. I've never seen her. So I know that she's stating that she's going to live in the property. I've never seen her, not once. And I'm a real estate agent, so I'm always, my head's always bopping around, looking and looking at things. So the incidents have still been the police calls. We've had police calls over there and things going on and people loitering. Our next-door neighbor directly to our right has had people lifting door handles and things like that that they had on video at that time. I don't know if they still have it, but yeah, we've had incidents there. And it's just the total uncertainty of what's going to happen since we saw in the state records of the Secretary of the State that Ms. Tasha Kennedy was the person of record and has been and has operated out of that facility, you know, prior to then. They just basically are switching names, and that's kind of like what we call in real estate, the real estate shell game. So you just move things around. And I have other property tax, tax records here where, from the address at Crossing Creek to the address at Douglasville to the address in Decatur. So that's the real estate shell game you play. And then when you start having other people applying for things that are also in your corporation papers to do various things is how you maneuver the system. And so that's what's been happening because, you know, that's what, you know, general businesses would do. They shut down in one name and open in another name. That's how you get around the system. So that's what's been going on here, and it's very egregious for us, very. When I'm having to worry, when I hear a sound, is it someone coming into the yard or to do something to the house or the cars? We're peeking out. When I go to the restroom, I'm having to look out and see if there's anything going on.
Okay, thank you. And say your name again for the record.
Rafael Estrada. And I think everyone in this subdivision feels the same way that I do pertaining to additional traffic. We have to go around the vehicles, they don't always park in the driveway.
And what kind of incidents have you had, whether police or break-ins or anything, since 2015?
Well, I've seen the police there a few times where they make phone calls. And I'm echoing Ms. King, they've been operating there for a while. It's still the same person that's management, they might have changed the name. But I've actually had a young lady that was driving a van, picking up one of the young girls to take her to an appointment, go to my house, and knock on my door to see if this is the address. And I was like, no, this is not the address, but I knew what she was looking for. So it, it's not, it's not something that we want there. And like I said, we've never had the opportunity to say even yes to it, and they've already started operating. And they've been operating there for quite some time where we were able to shut it down for a while, but they tried to open it up again. So we really want you guys to say no.
All right, okay. Okay, thank you. I think that, did anybody else have any questions or?
They, just so you understand, they can operate a group home there with, as long as they don't have more than four children, they don't, there's no requirement for them to notify you. That's the law. But if they go above that, they do have to have this land use permit, and they have to have that in order to get their state licensing. So that's, that's what we're here today to consider. Okay, Gaunt, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just one question for Ms. Kennedy. When there's visitation, do the parents come to the home or do you take them to the DFAX facility?
We tell Department of Family and Children's Services that we do not supervise visitation, so usually a transporter will pick them up and take them to the location to have visitation with their family. The only people that comes to the facility are the caseworkers and the therapist or the psychologist to provide services.
Okay, thank you.
There, there's something that's bothering me. There, there's this, this whole litany of all this crime that, and harassment and just intimidation and so forth that seems to have occurred. It's not clear to me whether, how much of that is recent in the last two years, but it's been occurring with the assumption being made that it's all coming from this house. Do we know that for a fact? Do we know that where, where the, is that, is this house? I guess I would like to ask Ms. King to come back up. Do we know that this house is the source of those problems?
Absolutely. We are requesting the records from Cobb County because we do have them and making sure that we have them for you guys. We just didn't get it in time, but yes, when the cops are there on our street, they're not there for any other house. You know, when people's alarm go off, they're able to disarm it and go about their day. But whenever there's a policeman or any type of other vehicle, it's due to this particular property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Dave. One thing I want to stress is we're making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners will make the final determina- determination in approximately two weeks, it's on a Tuesday, September 19th. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. But I also want to invite you, Commissioner Cupid and I hold a community zoning meeting on the second Wednesday of the month, 6:00 p.m. at the South Cobb Recreation Center. They're on Riverside Parkway, formerly Six Flags Drive. Invite you all to come, applicant, neighbors and that, where we can discuss the case in a little bit more detail as well there. And you can make sure everybody gets to speak to Commissioner Cupid, and she'll be the one leading the discussion at the Board of Commissioners and that. So I want to extend that out to you. Because up until now, I hadn't heard from any of the neighbors, and I had actually knocked on the doors, but nobody, well, one house answered, and the person said she wasn't the owner, and I left my card. And I, I did notice that an awful lot of the houses had security cameras in, in, in front of them and that, which is something I normally don't, don't see that many. But, you know, and I know, hey, people work, people are gone, you know, sometimes people don't want to answer the door for a stranger. They see and say, oh, that guy's trying to sell me something. So I understand that, that people don't. But I did make, make an effort to kind of reach out to, to people in the case. And I know the other thing is on a land use permit, they're just required to post those signs. And unfortunately, I think the people who live up the street probably don't drive to the, into the street and see the signs in a, in a case like, like this. You know, that's just the way the system is at, at this point. So anyway, I want to make sure you guys are, are aware of the meeting so that you can bring, if you get more evidence or more documentation and, and you want to bring it and share it with Commissioner Cupid, I'd bring a copy to give her, you know, if, if you come to that meeting. And also bring it to the actual hearing so that you can enter it in, but at least, you know, if you get it to her beforehand, she'll have time to review it. Because I was trying to read through what you were handing me at the same time as listening to what you were saying, and it's a little, little tough, and we're need to make our decision today on this. You know, generally, my heart goes out to trying to, you know, accommodate these kids who, who needs some help, and, and we've approved them in some areas and not approved them in others. And I think when I spoke to Ms. Kennedy on the phone, and I said, a lot of it's going to depend on whether we hear from neighbors with concerns and issues that they're having or not. And in this one, I think we're hearing pretty loud and clear that there's been issues and, and that, as Commissioner Terry said, they have a right to operate with four there under, under the county code. You know, but to go higher, they have to get a, a land use permit. And the purpose of the land use permit is to take these into considerate, you know, everybody's input into consideration and see if it's compatible. And right now, it just doesn't appear like it's been a compatible fit. So I'm going to make a motion that we recommend denial of LUP 17.
A motion and a second from Ms. Powell. Let's go ahead and register our votes. So I'll call for the vote. So that is exactly what we'll do, four to zero. Good luck to you. Okay, John, what's next, please? Ms. Powell has an engagement she needs to leave for, so what do we have left?
That is the end of the agenda. We're done.
It's the end of the agenda, so Ms. Powell, you're free to go. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, we have minutes. We can do that, though. Anything else?
The only thing I want to add is, is we need three of the PC members to be here next Wednesday to adopt the minutes for the Board of Commissioners. We need three people here Wednesday.
We'll try, next Wednesday.
You sure they're going to be here?
That's a maybe.
I'm not always sure.
Yeah, I know, we have to kind of wait and see. Okay, so last thing to clear up here is we have minutes from August 28th, and also we're both on August 28th.
I'll make a motion, we accept those minutes as presented.
Okay. Second from Gaunt, all in favor of approving the minutes? So that's fruit, three, zero, okay? And that should be a quorum, so we should be okay. All righty. I guess the meeting is adjourned at 12:14, so we didn't have to take a lunch break. Thank you, everyone.